Cue video?
Yeah. Well, the one thing about this seat is it's got the bar and so I had to get me the phone because I was forever paying my money.
Thank you, Goodzak.
I really hope you're right, but I'm thinking based on what I was getting today. Okay, so we are going to move now into a study session with Agenda Bill 5272, which is NPDES Stormwater Code Update. And Patrick Yamashita, your man for this, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. NPDES is sort of like alphabet soup. Hope you don't get too tired of all the letters. Here with me tonight is Rebecca Dugapolsky. She's with Herrera Environmental Consultants. We've worked with Rebecca and her team over the last many years, I think since about 2009, on various stormwater-related issues and projects, including work with public works and maintenance and operations and things like that. And the reason that we've worked with them for so long is that they have a lot of experience in stormwater, especially, I think, on the regulatory side. They have relationships with the Department of Ecology. They do a lot of training on behalf of the Department of Ecology for other cities. So we feel that we get a good value from Rebecca and her team. I'll give you just a little outline of what we're going to talk about today in the study session, and then a little bit more briefly during regular business for the first reading. We're going to cover a little bit of background related to stormwater and NPDES. Then I'll touch on our current stormwater requirements. Rebecca will talk about the new requirements required by NPDES, and also code and documents that we've reviewed, and then we'll conclude with our project timeline, and then hopefully have lots of time for questions and interaction. So with that, I'm going to hand off to Rebecca to talk a little bit about the background.
All right, thank you. So first off, I wanted to start talking a little bit bigger picture about why we manage stormwater in the first place, because that kind of triggers, you know, the other things we'll be talking about today. But basically, why we're managing stormwater are maintaining public spaces and infrastructure, we're ensuring public safety, we're preventing flooding. And then the last two are really key to, I think, the setting of Mercer Island, so protecting ecosystem functions and protecting recreational uses of receiving waters. Both of these things are critical, I think, with the Lake Washington surrounding the city. And in the relatively recent past, we know there was a bunch of raw sewage going into the lake, primary treatment only, and so that's had a huge comeback from that type of thing. So we want to make sure that we protect and make sure that we're not putting stormwater pollution in the lake and causing more issues. So those two things, I think, are really key, those last two bullets on this slide. Some of the potential impacts from stormwater runoff related to that include water pollution, so there's lots of things that come up in stormwater as it runs through our roadways and picks up all those things on the roadway, that our cars from our brake pads that breaks down, things from our rooftops. So lots of things can be on the roadway, and then that all gets washed into the water. Other issues here at Mercer Island, definitely flooding, structural damage, channel degradation. You've got lots of small ravines and watercourses, so that can be an issue with a lot of water coming down through those watercourses as well. So what are the regulations that are out there that guide the city's program? The primary regulation that we'll be talking about is the Phase II municipal stormwater NPDS permit, and that's the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit. That is driven by the Clean Water Act, all the way back to 1972, although it did, there was a little bit of a lag time before the NPDS program got up and running. So the first permit in the state actually went into effect in 1995, and then the city didn't get added specifically until 2007. But the city has been under the NPDS permit since 2007, and in the state of Washington, that authority is delegated to the Department of Ecology, so they implement the program here in the state. In addition to the municipal permit, there's also separate permits that cover construction, also industrial, and boatyards. So there's other things out there, but municipal is the one we'll be focusing on today. And Ecology is currently working on drafting the next permit, so even though this current permit term is 2013 to 2018, the next permit is, will be up and running soon, so that'll be 2018 to 2022. So even though it's a five-year permit, it keeps getting renewed, it keeps changing every five years. This is just a summary of the list of all the different jurisdictions in the state. You'll notice there's kind of three different baskets here, so we've got the Phase I permities, which have slightly more stringent requirements, those are the larger cities and counties in Washington, in Western Washington. And then in the Western Washington Phase II, that's where Mercer Island is, and there's a large chunk of other cities and counties, including almost all of your surrounding cities and counties are part of that permit. And then there's one over in Eastern Washington as well. So we'll be talking a little bit about the term low-impact development, so I wanted to cover what low-impact development is. Essentially, it's a stormwater and land use management strategy, and really what it's striving to do is mimic those pre-development hydrologic processes, so things like infiltration, filtration, storage, evaporation, transpiration, all those things that would occur in a native forest setting. Really, what we're trying to do is design to that, so we're kind of mimicking those natural processes where possible. It also includes things like minimizing impervious surfaces, retaining native vegetation, and minimizing stormwater runoff. And then it includes small-scale engineering practices, and we'll be running through a few examples of what those are. So I mentioned those five key functions, so it includes infiltration, filtration, storage, evaporation, transpiration, and really what we're looking at is kind of mimicking that natural process. And so here, I'm just going to walk through a few different photos and examples of what low-impact development is, actually, when you put it in a distributed setting throughout the development. So rain gardens here are non-engineered, they're shallow depressions, they have plants and a compost amended soil system. Soil amendment requirements are intended to be easy to implement by a single-family residential homeowner, so they have less intensive infiltration testing associated with that. And then bioretention, Ecology is now distinguished between these two terms, so bioretention is where you have a more specific soil media. Currently, that specification is 60% sand, 40% compost, so there's a pretty specific specification that needs to be followed for bioretention. And those facilities sometimes have, here on the bottom picture, you can see weirs and other engineered structures, so a lot of times you'll see those in a bioretention facility versus just a simple rain garden in a homeowner's property. And then we also have permeable pavement, so there's many different types of permeable pavement, so this slide just shows a few different photo examples of those. So we've got pervious concrete, we've got porous asphalt, permeable pavers, and open cell grid systems. And essentially there, the goal is to get water to pass through the pavement section itself, instead of our traditional practice of putting the water in a catch basin and then into a pipe. Here, we're actually having the water run through the pavement itself and infiltrate into an underlying storage aggregate reservoir. A couple more examples, vegetated roofs, where you have a thin layer of engineered soil with vegetation on top of that, usually a flat or slight slope to the roof. We've got rainwater harvesting, which can be either underground or above-ground cisterns, and then you can reuse that for irrigation, and also for toilet flushing, cold water laundry, that type of thing. We've also got compost amended soils, and this is a big one, that's post-construction soil management BMP, so where you're going in and amending your soil with compost to make sure that your vegetation will establish well and will grow well, and that you have that cover over the ground to prevent things like erosion and channel degradation. And then downspout dispersion, that one's pretty simple, you know, either having a splash block or a trench at the end of your downspout to make sure that you're dispersing that water from your rooftop, instead of just piping that straight into a stormwater system. So with that, I'll hand it over to Patrick to walk us through the city's current requirements, and then I'll hop back in and explain what the new requirements are.
So I'm going to just touch on some of the high-level thresholds on our stormwater requirements right now. So if you have a project that disturbs over one acre of land, then currently the 2005 Department of Ecology Stormwater Manual applies. But most of the projects on Mercer Island do not disturb more than an acre. That might be 1% or 2% of the projects. So for all the other projects, if they create more than 500 square feet of a net new impervious surface, then the 1992 Stormwater Management Manual applies. Focusing on those projects that disturb more than one acre, which is 1% or 2%, maybe 3% of projects, if the project creates over 2,000 square feet of new and replaced impervious surface, then they need to manage their stormwater on-site. If they also create more than 5,000 square feet of pollution-generating impervious surface, which is basically your driveway, parking areas, any hard surface that's going to collect pollutants, especially from vehicles. If you exceed that 5,000 square feet, then you need to treat the stormwater runoff from those hard surfaces. And then finally, if you create more than 10,000 square feet of new plus replaced impervious surface, you need to provide something called flow control. It's these large underground concrete tanks. For example, if you've seen the Koval project during construction, you probably saw a huge, huge hole. Eventually, it became a concrete box. That's the flow control. It collects all the stormwater runoff from the site, and then it slowly meters the water out into the drainage system. And the intent of that is to kind of mimic what happens in nature when there is no development, the lots are treated and vegetated, there is nice topsoil. So when it rains, some of the water lands on the trees, and it transpires, or evaporates. Some eventually hits the ground. That gets absorbed by the topsoil for a while, and then eventually you get some runoff. So that's what these vaults do. It slowly meters the water from the site into the drainage system, so it doesn't impact our watercourses and create a lot of erosion. So currently, the 2005 Stormwater Manual has 10 different requirements. Right now, I just want to focus on number five, onsite stormwater management. Currently, in the manual, low-impact development is optional, but it's not a requirement. And now moving on to the new requirements that are proposed.
So circling back to that slide that I showed, these are requirements that are required to be implemented by all the different Phase II and Phase I jurisdictions, so all the small cities and counties that I showed on that slide, and also the larger cities and counties in Western Washington. But the main requirement, there's two slides on this, but one of them that we're taking a look at is reviewing, revising, and making effective local development codes, rules, and standards and enforceable documents to incorporate and require low-impact development. So we're shifting from what Patrick mentioned in the 2005 manual as encouraging, or to the maximum extent feasible, to actually now incorporating and requiring low-impact development. And we'll talk about, I heard a couple comments that, you know, it doesn't always work, and we'll talk about what the feasibility requirements are in a minute. So incorporate and require where it's technically feasible, so there's a list of things we'll be taking a look at, associated with what that feasible term means. So really, the intent of the revisions is to make low-impact development the preferred and commonly-used approach where feasible, so taking a look at low-impact development first, and then looking at some of your more traditional detention vaults and pipes. I talked briefly earlier about minimizing impervious surfaces, native vegetation loss, and stormwater runoff, and that's really the overarching goal of taking a look at all your different development-related codes to work in that language throughout your codes. The second one that we're focusing on, and kind of the main focus of the changes proposed for Title 15, is looking at reviewing and revising your stormwater codes and ordinances for equivalency with the 2014 Stormwater Management Manual for Western Washington. So along with the last permit update, I mentioned the 2013 to 2018 permit. Ecology also updated their manual in 2012, so it's no longer the 2005 manual, it's now the 2012, and then amended in 2014 to incorporate a few additional changes. And then we'll talk through what those changes are and how that impacts city projects. So now, instead of Patrick mentioned that one-acre threshold, so now the one-acre threshold is totally dropped out, so there's no longer that one-acre threshold. So now you're taking a look at stormwater requirements for all projects regardless of size of land disturbance. And so you'd be taking a look at the 2012 amended in 2014 Stormwater Management Manual for Western Washington. And so what that is, so since that one-acre threshold goes away, now we start at 2,000 square feet of new and replaced. That's where your stormwater requirements start to kick in. So at the 2,000 square feet of new and replaced, and you'll notice this term here is hard surface, so slightly different than what Patrick was talking about, but really all that means is now you're looking at permeable pavement and vegetated roofs, as well as your impervious surfaces. So still, your standard driveways, parking lots, rooftops, all those things, now you're just looking at permeable pavement and vegetated roofs as part of that definition.
Just so I understand, new and replaced, so if we do a tear-down, then everything that's built there would be considered new and replaced?
So it depends, there's a couple nuances within that. So for roads and driveways, replaced means removal down to bare soil or base course or lower, so you do have to remove down to the base course in order for that to trigger new requirements. And there are some exemptions for typical road maintenance practices, so if you're doing something like overlaying existing asphalt or shoulder grading.
Let me just tell you about it, typical, typical single-family residential development.
Yep, yep.
So that's 2,000 square feet of land has to be, become impervious, essentially.
Yeah, so for tear-downs, it would kick in at, if you're going down to the foundation, that's where your requirements would start kicking in, is where the definition is. So Patrick, I don't know if you had anything to add to that, but the definition basically says, replaced impervious means removal and replacement down to the foundation.
But if you scrape the entire lot and start from scratch, then it is just 2,000 square feet of the new impervious, since everything else is gone.
But what you were saying before is that if, for example, you left in the driveway, and just repaved it or something, that's not considered replacement impervious surface, and that's excluded from the calculation?
If you're not going down to the base course, then it wouldn't be considered replaced.
So, but also just, and then, so to put that in context, because, I mean, 2,000 doesn't sound like a large number, but in actuality, it's, because that's just the lower level of the house. I mean, you could end up with, easily with a 4,000-square-foot house and not have to comply with this. Just, I just, that's what I'm trying to, your 4,000, sort of floor area, 4,000 square feet of floor area, and depending on if it's, how many levels you've got. But it says 2,000 feet of actually on-the-ground coverage.
So if you have a small footprint for the house, and you have a hard-surface walkway and a patio that's new, and you don't touch most of your driveway, it probably is still going to go over the 2,000.
So that's for the onsite stormwater management. And then, again, runoff treatment and flow control thresholds are the same, so that 5,000 square feet is where you have pollution-generating surfaces. So typically, for runoff treatment, that doesn't mean a roof area, but it's any driveway area, parking area, area that has vehicular traffic on it generally. And then our 10,000 square feet of new and replaced will trigger your flow control. And I did have one slide just showing that new hard-surface term, since we're kind of shifting away from impervious surface and now shifting to hard surface, so generally, it's most of the time, you're just your impervious surfaces, but also taking into account permeable pavement and vegetated roofs to make sure that you're accounting for those in your thresholds as well.
I don't get around the limit if I put in a 2,000, 3,000-square-foot house and a permeable driveway and a vegetated roof. I still, I would still.
Yeah, and basically, I think the reasoning for putting in this term was just to make sure that you're, it's not that you're having a different requirement, it's just making sure you're accounting for those, and then your permeable pavement is generally self-mitigating because the rain that falls on the permeable pavement passes through, and you can store that underneath, so it's just a way of accounting for it in terms of your modeling and how you're accounting for what your thresholds will be for your project, so.
I see. Thank you. David, or Benson, go ahead.
You know, as you know, we're doing this residential development code, and I'm just kind of curious, because obviously you're talking about new terms here. I mean, are you folks working, not you, I'm sorry, but the engineering department, are you guys talking with DSG? Are we trying to meld the two changes?
Actually, I sit about 15 feet away from Evan Maxim, so we do talk, and a lot of times.
Glad to hear it.
Stormwater runoff and stormwater regulations, the way we look at impervious surface, might be a little bit different from how the development code might look at a lot coverage. But typically, what happens is the architect is looking at lot coverage, the civil engineer is looking at stormwater runoff from the impervious surfaces. So it generally does work okay, but short answer is yes, we are talking with DSG.
And is it, sorry, it's hard for me to track on this a little bit, is it a trade-off? So if I have, if I have a driveway, let's say I'm over the limit, I have a, I replace my driveway with pervious asphalt or pavers, or whatever it is, does that then, that then decrements from my total pervious service calculation? So to Dan's point, if I built a very large house that's over the 2,000 feet, but I have some of these mitigating factors, like that 2,000, or that 4,000-square-foot house has a green roof and the driveways are all permeable, does that then detract from the total calculation?
It's kind of a little bit, and you'll see, I think, in a minute when we get to the list approach, kind of how it works, but basically, for each surface, you're going through a list of BMPs, and permeable pavement, if you hit that BMP and you implement it, you're done. That's taking care of your requirements. So if your driveway is all permeable pavement, you wouldn't necessarily have to do anything else in terms of flow control, or even runoff treatment, if you put in a very small layer of treatment soils underneath that, you're good for runoff treatment, flow control, and onsite stormwater management. So if permeable pavement works, it's a great BMP that helps you meet multiple requirements. But as we'll find, there's a lot of restrictions to where permeable pavement might work, so it's not always going to be the first thing on the list that you take a look at.
But it doesn't, I get, I'm sorry, my question is so simpleton, but it doesn't.
Doesn't reduce the calculation.
Yeah, does it reduce the calculation of lot coverage?
No, doesn't reduce the calculation of lot coverage, it's just, it's looking at how much of that surface you're required to mitigate. So I guess, a little unclear, Ecology thought that they needed to add this term to cover these additional things, so people, some jurisdictions were already writing that in to their definition of impervious surface, but because permeable pavement is a permeable surface, it's not necessarily an impervious surface, so the hard-surface term is more encompassing of what those different surface types might be.
Okay.
And then a BMP is just a best management practice.
Okay, onward.
All right, so similar to the slide that Patrick showed earlier, this is just showing what the differences are in the 2012, 2014 manual. So with minimum requirement one, that first one on there, so when you're looking at submitting a stormwater site plan, a new plan for review, there are additional requirements now for soil testing, for infiltration testing that are associated with that. So in order to make sure that low-impact development will work, there's some additional testing that needs to be done in terms of your soils and infiltration testing to make sure that it will work. With construction stormwater pollution prevention, there's a new element number 13, and that was added as protection for low-impact development best management practices, so now that we have more bioretention and permeable pavement going in, we want to make sure that we protect those during construction, so for long-term maintenance, there's not issues associated with that. And then number five, now talking about low-impact development is required where feasible, and we'll go over what that feasible term is in a minute. And then the city has also proposed to add onsite detention to the end of the required lists, so basically, we'll go over the list in a minute, but when you get to the bottom of the list and nothing works, you're done. And so the city decided that that's not as protective as your current requirement, which requires that onsite detention at 500 square feet of net new impervious. So they wanted to make sure they were still capturing those sites to make sure that we're not having erosion and issues in our small watercourses around the island. So that's a proposal. That's also been done by the City of Edmonds. They have lots of similar issues with steep slopes along the Puget Sound, and so they added that to the bottom of their list, so it's something that's being done elsewhere in the region as well.
Sorry, so.
Yeah.
And in our land use code, we've struggled with the word feasible, as I think Patrick knows. So when a developer comes in and says, no, I don't want to build the house that way, DSG sometimes said, okay, well, that means it's not feasible. So I'm just concerned that, who's defining feasibility here? So if the developer says, I need a 5,000-square-foot home, is that then, is that the end of the discussion, or does the word feasibility have any, give us any pushback to say, no, maybe you have to build a 4,500-square-foot home?
Yeah, so Ecology actually thought about this quite a bit, and actually, originally in the first draft of the permit, they had all the feasibility criteria in the permit, and then they decided to pull them out and put them all in the manual instead. But permeable pavement has about 30 different technical and feasibility criteria we'd take a look at, and bioretention has 21 different things, so you're looking at things like, if you're in an erosion hazard area, landslide hazard area, if you're within a steep slope or a steep slope setback. There are some that are pretty cut and dry, and then there are some that are a little more gray, but there's a whole list of technical and feasibility criteria, so when we say "infeasible," that's kind of what we're targeting there. And it's pretty well-laid out in the manual, and there's a section that actually says "infeasibility criteria" with each BMP that you would take a look at.
Okay.
All right, and then the last few minimum requirements here, I mentioned that runoff treatment and flow control are essentially the same requirements as 2005. I did include the flow control threshold here, because although it was at the 10,000-square-feet impervious, the city was actually implementing that at that 500-square-feet net new, so this will be, will be a change for flow control, but that lower threshold will be kicking in at the onsite stormwater management level rather than the flow control. All right, so the next thing I wanted to walk through is really what, how you actually implement this new minimum requirement number five. So breaking this down, I do a lot of trainings around the state, so this is kind of the way that Ecology has put forth how you explain it and how I typically explain it. But basically, the first category that you look at, and list number one is basically if you're triggering anything, starting at that 2,000 square feet, all the way up to where you would be triggering runoff treatment and flow control. So this is looking at lawn and landscaped areas. There's only one best management practice you need to apply in those areas, so anything that's disturbed on-site, you're amending those soils or retaining native topsoil and using that on-site, so there's pretty prescriptive requirements that go along with that.
So for what range of projects does that cover?
Yeah, so this is for minimum requirements number one through five, so this is list number one. It's the same, the lawn and landscaped areas is the same for list number two, which goes for your full set of minimum requirements, which is one through nine. So it starts at the 2,000 square feet of new and replaced hard surface.
So for example, if you're only, if you're at only 2,000, then certain lists apply? If you go to 3,000, does another set of lists apply, or?
There's only, there's only two lists, I guess, so that's the, and the intent of the list was to make things easier to implement it. There's also a LID performance standard, if you don't want to follow the list, but the lists are things that don't require modeling, you can just follow the BMPs down the list and pick the one that works, if you don't have any of those other technical and feasibility criteria that apply. So it's trying to simplify the process of implementing, because in the last, the last permit and the last manual, we just had implement LID to the maximum extent feasible, and no one knew what that was. So a variety of different jurisdictions put out what they thought maximum extent feasible was, and no one quite landed on the right thing. Some were pushing it more than others, some just said, oh, it doesn't, you know, that's not defined, so we're not going to implement it. So now, I think, the intent of this list one and list two is, what is the maximum extent feasible? How would we implement that? So it's just making, making it a little more prescriptive, more of a menu of things to follow and walk through for each site. So that's for your lawn and landscaped areas, and there's only, only one option there, so that's pretty straightforward. When you get to roof areas, you're basically starting at the top of this list and working down, so you'll start taking a look at full dispersion, downspout, full infiltration, with limited lot sizes and limited areas. This one's often next to impossible to implement in urban areas, so there may be some settings where it would work well, but generally, that'd be more park settings where you're retaining a lot of native vegetation, and in small lot sizes, it's really tricky unless, unless you have a very small house footprint and you're just preserving the rest as a forested condition. So the next thing you move to would be rain gardens or bioretention, and then moving down to downspout dispersion, perforated stubouts, which would be a perforated pipe at the end of your, your downspout under the ground. of your, your downsput under the ground, connected to the stormwater system. And then the city would be adding onsite detention at the bottom of that list. And we'll be walking through an example in a minute of how this might apply to a typical project. So other hard surfaces is basically any other surfaces other than a roof on your property. So if you've got a driveway, if you've got a parking lot, if you've got a patio, sidewalk, anything, all those other things fall into the second category. So starting again with full dispersion, and then moving next to permeable pavement, bioretention or rain gardens, those are all on the same threshold, so you could implement any of those within that level two.
What is full dispersion?
Yeah, so full dispersion is basically you would be retaining a certain percentage of your site as a forested condition, or you would be kind of replanning the site to retain that, that type of vegetation. And then you have a very small area of impervious that you can actually have on your site. So I think it's typically 10%, although there's kind of a sliding scale. So 10% impervious, and then the rest of your site would be forested.
So if, do we as a city have an opportunity or have the option of saying that, for example, we want to only do full dispersion if that's, I mean, that, that we can eliminate some of those if we, if those aren't the ones we want?
Do you mean on a project basis or island-wide?
No, just as a matter of, I mean, if we want to say that, for example, of those four on, on the other hard surfaces, that full dispersion is the, is the first place to go to. You don't get to, you don't get to choose, well, instead of keeping trees, we're going to do permeable pavement. Can we say, can we rank those somehow and say, this is what we want you to do?
The rating or ranking in terms of these improvements are from top to bottom. So if someone cannot do full dispersion because of the soils or some other constraints, then they have to look at number two, permeable pavement.
That is the ranking. Okay.
Maybe another way of saying it, I mean, so you have the permit and you have the requirements. Can the city, can the city deviate from those requirements, make it more strict? I think I heard that we have done that.
Yeah, yeah, you can definitely make things more stringent. So ecology's having you start at the level of full dispersion, and if you can do that, if there's no technical infeasibility criteria, while you can't do that, you would just stay there. And that's, that's great. If you've got the area and you can preserve your native vegetation, that's, that's the best course of action. It's the lowest tech course of action as well, so you don't have to, you know, put in any depressions or any permeable pavement in that case. So, so it's a, it's a great BMP if it will work, so. I haven't looked at all the specific lot sizes and things like that to see if it would work on many new developments on the island, but there may be some areas where it would work, and that's where you would stop.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but these restrictions and new amendments are more stringent than the current code, correct? Ecology is already addressing a lot of the uncertainty in the existing NPDS, and these new requirements are more restrictive than the current code, correct?
The new requirements are more restrictive in that it, the trigger is 2,000-square-feet versus the one acre of land disturbance.
And the definitions are very clear, and the priorities are very clear.
Yes.
All right, so that's list number one, and I just wanted to point out that the only differences are, when you switch to the full list of minimum requirements, the only differences are that you no longer have the option to do a rain garden, so you would just be looking at a bioretention facility, which is the more engineered soils I was talking about. So that's one difference there. And then for other hard surfaces, you would start at permeable pavement and then next move to bioretention after that. So there's only really two differences between the two lists, and those are the main two So let's look at what a typical development might look like. So this is a typical new house, less than 5,000-square-feet of impervious. Under your current requirements, you'd be kicking in at 500 net new impervious. Infiltration and dispersion would be optional. Soil and infiltration testing would be infrequent unless you have a slope or erosion hazard, so not necessarily triggered by stormwater requirements, but other requirements to make sure that you have a stable piece of property and that you're accounting for those things. So most often, you're looking at a small detention vault or pipe. That's the most common scenario for those, those settings. So now with the new requirements, that's kicking in at 2,000-square-feet of new plus replaced. So debating if that seems like an equivalent threshold, we had some discussion about whether the net new impervious and the new plus replaced seemed equivalent, and the discussion was that, that seemed like that would be somewhat of an equivalent threshold, you know, maybe not across the board in all settings, but in most settings, it would be fairly similar. Infiltration and dispersion, now you have to take a look at that first. So it's not just optional, you have to take a look at that first to see if that will work. Your soil and infiltration testing could be more frequent.
Can you repeat that again, why 500 equals 2,000?
Maybe you can describe that one a little better than I can, but yeah.
Sure, so the 500 is 5,000-square-feet of, it's a net increase in impervious surface.
I get that.
The 2,000 is new impervious surface plus replaced impervious surface. For example, maybe a building addition and a new driveway. That might be 1,000 square feet, let's say, of a driveway that's taken down to bare ground, or maybe they're moving the driveway, and then 1,000 square feet of new addition for the house. Now, if we look at the current standard, the net increase in impervious surface would be the 1,000-square-feet for the addition. If the footprint of the driveway didn't change, that's not at any, that's not included in the net increase. So in, in that scenario, that's 1,000.
I understand how you do the calculation. I just don't, I mean, you, because you had said that we made this, we determined somehow that 500 and 2,000 would, that the new requirement would, as I interpreted, would pick up the same projects that the old 500-square-foot is, is picking up, and I can't understand how you would make, feature that.
We just had a dialogue about different scenarios and whether or not the 500-square-feet of net increase is more or less typically than this other threshold of 2,000-square-feet of new plus replaced. And after we talked through a variety of scenarios, we felt like, hmm, it's probably around the same ballpark, but it depends on the specific project.
Just, so I could get a time check. How many more slides have you got? How are we doing? Because we're, we're almost, we're 38 minutes in or so, and have 15.
We have 10, 10 slides.
Okay. Let's, let's try and.
Keep moving.
Chunk through and give ourselves time at the end, rather than, I'd hate to have you run out of.
Yeah, yeah, no, lots of good questions. This is definitely complicated, so. So the, the last couple bullets on here is that soil and infiltration testing could be more frequent or rigorous to determine infeasibility. So there's some scenarios where you wouldn't have to do a soil or infiltration test. So if you already know you're in an erosion landslide hazard area or steep slope area, you wouldn't have to do a soil test, but there's this area where you'd have to evaluate whether you have good infiltratable soils or not. And then detention vaults and pipes would be, then be at the bottom of the list, so evaluated last, not necessarily the first thing that's used on all projects. So feasibility, we've been talking about a little bit, and I wanted to outline what that is specifically. So there's infeasibility criteria I talked about folded into the stormwater management manual, and that's in there for bioretention, rain gardens, permeable pavement, downsput infiltration, and that post-construction soil quality and depth, although there's really only one or two associated with that last one. Some of those infeasibility criteria will require a geotechnical evaluation and written recommendation, and we've got a couple slides highlighting what those are. You also need to take a look at the design criteria, so which, with each BMP, there's a list of design criteria, you need to make sure that those will work as well. There's a list of BMP limitations, it's pretty, there's not a lot of content there. And then there's competing needs, so if there's other things, such as a superfund site, if a local transportation plan is, is more stringent than what these requirements are, there are other things that you'll need to take a look at there. So, and looking at the island specifically, so what, what is considered infeasible? You'll notice here that there's a lot of shaded areas on this map. The pink areas are steep slopes that are greater than 40%. Green areas are known or suspect landslide hazard areas. We've got our setback from landslide hazard areas in a yellow, and then that orange is an erosion hazard area, known or suspect, and the blue is shallow groundwater areas. So there's, there's a lot of areas, especially around the ring, around the island, that are areas that would not be considered feasible for low-impact development. So with some mapping, you may just take a look at your site and know that you can't infiltrate on that site, so you wouldn't have to do soil testing or infiltration testing associated with that.
We wanted to make sure that we could make things a little simple or simpler for our customers, especially our residents. I know there are residents who build, and there are developers who build, but this will be a helpful tool for all, where if we didn't have the mapping, they would have to go through a more rigorous process, working through their professionals to do some work to figure out, is this area feasible or not?
I'm sorry, so which, which parts are not feasible for, everything that's colored is not feasible?
Yeah, so we may have to revisit this mapping and tweak some of these boundaries a little bit, but in general, it's that the ring around the outer edge of the island where you have steep slope areas, erosion hazard and landslide hazard areas. So any of those areas that are not shaded in the middle of the island would be where you'd need to do further infiltration or soil testing to determine if low-impact development would work in those areas.
And everything outside and around the ring, it would or would not work?
In, within the inside of the ring, it may be.
In the green areas.
Oh, in the green area? Yeah, in the green areas, landslide hazard, so that, that gets you off the list for several BMPs, not, not all BMPs. So I talked about that post-construction soil quality and depth, that doesn't kick in until you have a slope of 33%. But looking at bioretention and permeable pavement, that's within a landslide hazard area, within a landslide hazard area setback.
As you know, this winter has been really wet. There have been a variety of landslides on private property, and what we don't want to do is require low-impact development techniques that involve putting the water into the ground in areas that are not appropriate or that could create a hazard. So that's why these colored areas are not intended to be feasible for LID.
So hopefully, that just helps put it into context a little bit more in terms of how this would actually work or would not work on the island. Some other things to point out, so I have a couple slides here that look at when you would need to get a geotechnical evaluation and written recommendation. So there, if you're in one of those areas we showed on the previous map, erosion landslide hazard area, you wouldn't have to get a geotechnical recommendation. But if you're outside of one of those areas and you want to evaluate erosion, slope failure, flooding, if you have a geotech evaluate your property and say that this infiltrating the water into the ground would cause this, and you have a written recommendation that suffices for your infeasibility. There are other things, looking at threatening pre-existing underground utilities, threatening existing below-grade basements, or if there's not a safe overflow pathway. So all of those instances, if you think that it won't work on your property, getting a geotechnical professional to take a look at that and write up a written recommendation, that would then be submitted to the city along with your, your plan to show that there's a reason why we didn't implement bioretention, and this is why. Permeable pavement is fairly similar, so again, those erosion, slope failure, flooding outside of a designated erosion or landslide hazard area, again, underground utilities and basements. Also here, we have where an adjacent impervious pavement might be compromised by having a permeable pavement surface next to that. If you have fill soils, that can be unstable and saturated, or if you've got an industrial facility, which I don't think applies here, but heavy loading in industrial facilities is another one you can take a look at. So next, we wanted to walk through a couple different single-family home scenarios. So we have scenario one, where your infiltration would be infeasible. So in this scenario, we've got 6,000-square-feet of new and replaced. Our driveway is less than the 5,000, so we're not triggering that runoff treatment threshold. We're located above an erosion hazard area in scenario one. In scenario two, we're not located in or above an erosion hazard area. Scenario one, we have a downstream water course, and scenario two, our infiltration testing shows that we have good soils, so above .3 inches per hour infiltration. So the first scenario, where infiltration is not feasible, we would still need to take a look at that soil quality and depth, so I talked about that's triggered on almost every project for your lawn and landscaped areas. Here, since infiltration is not, or infiltration is infeasible, that would most certainly bump you down to the bottom of the list. There are a few instances where I think number four, the perforated stubout connections, could apply. You need to evaluate that on a site-by-site basis, but most likely, you'd be put back towards the city's current standard, which is that onsite detention. And then same thing for other hard surfaces, again, landing on onsite detention. So, and those could both be handled typically in the same, same vault or same pipe. Now where we have infiltration where it is feasible, so an area probably in the interior of the island where we've got good soils, again, we're looking at soil quality and depth for lawn and landscaped areas. And then we would probably land on number two, so looking at rain gardens or bioretention, because we have good soils, that's probably where we would end up. And then for other hard surfaces, we could use that same rain garden or bioretention if our site slopes work, or we could also take a look at permeable pavement. So where you have good soils, you're basically stopping at that number two, where you don't have good soils, you're working your way down the list. One of those other things may apply, but you could most likely be ending up with the city's current standard.
And so why did you not stop on full dispersion? Why did you just pass over that?
So full dispersion, I talked about it, it can be tricky to, to apply in an urban setting, so for this small lot setting, we're assuming that with developing a site of this size, that you might not be able to protect that much native forest and still get your house in.
Assuming you were on a huge lot, you could do it.
Yes.
They're just assuming that it's unlikely you're going to have a huge lot in our community.
And in simple terms, dispersion just means that you're dispersing the stormwater runoff into a, sort of a flattish area where it disperses and doesn't impact your neighbors because you have so much property. But on Mercer Island, there aren't that many lots in that kind of situation.
Patrick, did you want to touch on this one?
Yeah, I think this might be almost our last slide. What happens on a very large house or a short plot? Let's say a house that has more than 10,000-square-feet of impervious surface. First, LID or infiltration is what you have to do if it's feasible, like Rebecca was talking about earlier. And then for 10,000-square-feet of new and replaced impervious or hard surface, you have to provide flow control, those really big detention systems, like I mentioned, similar to COVAL. And then the driveway, if it's a property with about 10,000-square-feet of impervious surface, it's unlikely that the driveway would exceed the 5,000-square-foot threshold for stormwater treatment. But if it was over 5,000, then they would have to treat their runoff from the hard surfaces related to the driveway and parking.
And then circling back to what we've been talking about today is primarily the changes to Title 15. We also took a look at Title 17 and Title 19 in the city's comprehensive plan and city handouts in the Parks and Recreation Plan. We did find some things within those that are more optional changes, so they wouldn't necessarily be things that are triggered by the permit. But definitions were one that we're definitely talking about for Title 19, making sure that we have consistent definitions and making sure that those definitions are, agree with what's in the stormwater manual. So that's one that will be recommended for updates in Title 19. Just a couple minor edits to the comprehensive plan, nothing major, just really focusing on what these new requirements are, making sure that that's highlighted. The stormwater section's pretty short in the current comprehensive plan, so hopefully that won't be too tricky to incorporate into the next update. And then the city's handouts will need some revisions to make sure that these new requirements are implementable. Overall, our project timeline, we met with the utility board back in February. We've been working on the draft code revisions. We're here at the Orange Dot now, the city council study session. We'll be going through CIPA process, and then hoping to have the final code revisions and the new code adopted by June. And then I don't know if we want to talk about anything else related to schedule, or?
That's it.
Yeah.
Just a quick question regarding the schedule. Is it correct that we're, we're going through all this, and then it expires a year from now? Will you be back again in a year?
So the, so the new permit you're talking about? Yeah. So the, with the new permit, ecology hasn't talked about any changes to these current requirements, so they're more or less planning on not adding a lot of new requirements in the new permit, so giving people time to implement these new changes. So with most jurisdictions, all of these changes went into effect at December 31st, 2016, so they know all these requirements just hit everyone all at once, and they need some time to make sure they can implement these requirements. So with the next permit, we're not envisioning that there'll be a lot of changes and that these current code changes will be sufficient to carry forward. There, it will be an update to the stormwater manual, but it's not going to be any technical content, so mainly kind of streamlining, making the online manual easier to use. That's kind of the message that ecology is providing right now, so there wouldn't be a lot of changes that would be needed to the city code. And if so, that's typically staggered in, that, that probably wouldn't be towards the end of the next permit cycle that those changes would be needed. Yeah. Any other questions?
Other questions?
You know, it's just more of a, after the code has been changed, I mean, what's the process for, you know, getting the word out and educating the public and also presumably developers and whatever, so.
Great question. Currently, we have information on our website.
the process for, you know, getting the word out and educating the public and also presumably developers and whatever, so?
Yeah.
Great question. Currently, we have information on our website, letting the public know what's going on, the timeframe for the implementation of the code, and some of the ins and outs of what is going to change. And for the last three or four months, as we've been talking to developers and other people that come to the permit counter, especially in more formal meetings, we are letting them know that our regulations are changing. A lot of times, though, when we're talking to the civil engineers related to projects, before we mention anything, they are already asking because they're working in other jurisdictions where these regulations are already in place.
Yeah?
So I'm just trying to understand this, and I appreciate it's very complex and appreciate all the work you've done on it. So I, it struck me towards when you showed that map of the island, and then you gave the two examples, that it seemed to say that most of the things, most of the LID type of things basically aren't going to apply for most of the island. Is, I saw, I mean, is that a wrong impression?
So I think looking at things related to LID where you're infiltrating water, I think for a lot of the island, infiltration is not going to be feasible, but there are other principles to LID, such as minimizing your impervious surfaces, retaining native vegetation, all of those other, the general LID principles, those will work anywhere, and it doesn't matter what your soils are. So I think there's kind of this LID land management strategy that will definitely work on the island. There's areas where we don't want infiltration because we know that'll cause erosion, landslide hazard, other issues, and public safety always trumps stormwater, so making sure that we're not causing more issues in those areas. So there are a lot of areas that I think it's not feasible on the island, yeah.
And some of what we heard over the last few months from residents have all involved, have involved the question of trees being cut down on, that they felt was impacting slopes because of the stormwater runoff that was not being, was not being collected by the trees that used to be there. My sense is that there's nothing in this code which will address that issue, and that we have to wait for the critical areas code to talk about that one?
So there is one BMP in the stormwater manual that talks about new or retained trees. And in a stormwater sense, what it's doing is just subtracting out a small area of your impervious surface to what your requirements are. So it's saying that those trees are providing benefit. It has a smallish credit for what benefit that's providing, but the intent is to make sure that you're not cutting down a tree to put in a bioretention area. So you're providing some credit for those retained trees and existing trees, but really it is kind of the critical areas ordinance that gets at your protection of existing trees, because this would just be during development or redevelopment that the stormwater requirements would kick in.
Is there any opportunity within this code to put something in there which prioritizes retaining trees in areas that are, where the slopes are being impacted? I mean, it seems like we're, we have an opportunity to potentially do something here which, I mean, which is directly related to stormwater, and I'm just worried that we're not taking advantage of that opportunity.
We've tried to scratch our head a little bit about that with respect to Title 15, and in the end, we feel like the best or most appropriate place would be in the critical areas regulations and the tree regulations, where they both talk more directly about trees.
Yes, Mayor, in fact, I was going to add that the critical areas ordinance is on our work plan to update. That is, to me, the most appropriate place to retain as much vegetation and trees. I mean, we do see lots and lots of landslides on our slopy areas, and so retaining trees is one way to try to mitigate that. I don't believe that's on the work plan until much later, but it does need updating, for sure.
No, and I realize that. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand whether there's anything we can do in this code to at least give development services a means to say, as between options here, we want you to protect the slopes more by not cutting down so many trees. I mean, it's just, it seems like there's an opportunity here that maybe we can address further in the critical areas ordinance, but, I mean, some of the stuff we're seeing in areas is just, is just huge amounts of trees being cut down, possibly unnecessarily.
But a lot of that will also be addressed in the residential development code.
And I understand that, but even, again, this is specifically related to stormwater.
Stormwater.
This is specifically what's causing the landslides that we're now dealing with. So it's, it would be nice to think there was something we can do in this code already which starts to address the problem. This is my only point, and I don't know what it is, but, you know, we talk about all these best management practices and, and that we want to implement, and it would seem to me that there's some opportunity here to say that a best management practice is not to cut down trees when there might be alternatives to that. If we know the trees are going to impact stormwater, going to create stormwater issues.
Okay, anyone else?
So I guess I'm just wanting to make sure I understand. Is there a desire from council to want to look at tree retention in the...
We have, I mean, we, as I understand, we have a, this is coming up on our AB 5273, a second item on regular business, so.
So you're okay, maybe?
Well, we'll talk about it there.
Talk about it there.
There's other issues there.
Okay.
All right. Let's, thank you very much to both of you. Let's go into recess for, I don't know, if you guys need five minutes, two minutes? What do you want? You want to just go? Keep going?
Keep going.
Oh, okay.
I can't start for two minutes.
I can't start for two minutes?
I've got to tell a joke for two minutes.
Debbie, go ahead.
The ones I heard are very fourth grade, ladies.
Oh, okay, well. Well, let's, we'll break for two minutes. So we'll start again when the clock says seven, because I can't start earlier than that. So you got a minute to stretch, and then we'll, then we'll go.
Cue video. Sorry, it's going to be just one second. Okay?
Great. So, good evening. We're going to return to order here. We have completed an executive session, actually, two executive sessions, and actually, we didn't complete them. We're going to return to that after our regular business and other items on the calendar. And we've completed a study session about the NPDES, Stormwater Code Update, which will then flow into an agenda bill later in the meeting. And at the moment now, we're going to advance to special business, which is a proclamation concerning Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And so I will now read that proclamation, which reads, "Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community. Rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community, and statistics show one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives. Child sexual abuse prevents, prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before age 18. Young people experience heightened rates of sexual violence, and youth aged 12 to 17 are 2.5 times as likely to be victims of rape or sexual assault. On campus, one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted during their time in college. We must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. Prevention is possible when everyone gets involved. The first step is increasing education, awareness, and community involvement. It's time for all of us to take action to create a safer environment for all. I, Mayor Bruce Bassett, do hereby proclaim April 2017 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Mercer Island, and I encourage all citizens to join advocates and communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence and create change for the future. Approved this April 3, 2017." We are joined this evening by Al Smith, I believe, of the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center. And Al, I would ask you to come up. We have a
Hi.
Copy of the proclamation for you, and then I understand you've got some words to add. So come on up, I'll give you this, and then I'll ask you to go ahead and go to the podium and share your comments.
Hi, everybody. I'm Al. I'm grant writer and communications coordinator at the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center. Thank you, Mayor Bassett. Thank you, council members, for proclaiming April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Mercer Island is joining over 27 cities in King County and the King County Council, declaring April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Casarc, where I work, we've provided services for over 30 years in King County to victims and survivors of sexual assault. And we know that when people raise their voices, when people tell their stories, and when people advocate for survivors of sexual assault, more victims are able to come forward and get the services that they need. So this is a really important step. Thank you for raising awareness. Also, thank you to the City of Mercer Island for your financial support. Last year, six citizens of Mercer Island got services at Casarc. We provide things like legal advocacy, therapy, and general advocacy, a crisis line, so when people need support, that they can get it. So, thank you very much. It's really important that we do this and continue to raise awareness. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. Okay, we move now to appearances, which is a time when anybody may address the council on any issue they wish. You'll have three minutes. The detailed rules of engagement are on the back wall, on the back door, but they really just boil down to please be civil. Please begin by giving your name and address. The one, the one thing I'll add, I got a couple phone calls today, and there's certainly been a lot of emails zinging around, and I assume Nextdoor is busy too, with the whole residential code update, and different folks sharing their opinions about that. There is a public hearing happening on Wednesday evening, and I would encourage everyone to...
Public meeting.
Public meeting? Well, it says hearing, I think, on the card, but public meeting happening on Wednesday evening, and I would encourage everyone to share their thoughts there with staff and with the Planning Commission. The issue's not yet before the council. The council will receive a recommendation from the Planning Commission and staff, and I believe that's happening at our first meeting in May, if I'm not cer, I'm not sure of that. I guess maybe...
Mayor, I'm planning to, along with Scott Greenberg, really present for you some dates, all the dates that the Planning Commission will review it, and then followed by the city council. So I'd like to review that with you this evening.
Thank you. But the short answer is it's not before the council at this point, and there is opportunity to speak to the folks who are actually engaged in trying to figure out what it should say Wednesday night, if you, if you go to the Planning Commission. So you are welcome to speak about it here, but it's a bit premature since we're not working on it at this point. So with that, we are open for public comment. So come on up, anybody who'd like to speak.
Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, my name is John Rose.
Could you speak into the microphone, Mr. Rose?
Yes, okay. Sorry about that. My name is John Rose, and on each of your desks, there's a copy of a report, because I sure am not going to be able to get through what I have to say in three minutes. But there's a very pertinent comment in the package that I gave you, in something that says here, "Attachment to." Okay, so if you'd like to turn to the third page in, I'd like to read it, something that the city put on their maps, which reads as follows. This is with regard to domestic property, and what the note on the plan for one particular house says, "The owner shall control discharge of runoff from existing and new impervious streets, impervious streams in a responsible manner. Construction of the new gutters and downspouts, dry something, dry walls, level spreaders, or downstream conveyance pipes may be necessary to minimize drainage impact on your neighbor." Construction of minimum drainage improvements shown, or called out on this plan, and incidentally, there's a plan included that it relates to, with this comment printed on it, "This plan, okay, does not imply relief from civil liability for your downstream drainage." Okay, that's all I have to say, except you'll find the remainder of the story in this report, and some illustrations of the problem that a neighbor has caused. Okay, this is something, this is something you can study at the weekend, and it seems to me that it fits in with your previous study sessions. Okay, so, thank you. I'd appreciate sometime in the near future, learning from any of you who are interested in this topic, what you think about it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Siro.
Mr. Mayor, I know you like people to queue up, so I did that for you.
Thank you for that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. and Madam Deputy Mayor and City Council. My name is Mike Siro. I live at 8300 Avalon Drive, down on South End by the Beach Club. Thank you all for your time that you spent on the community and on regional issues. Thank you all for your time that you spend on the community and on regional issues. I'm here to ask that either as individuals or as a body, you take a more definitive and active position legislating the delay of the I-90 Center Lane closure. I provided the city clerk the Cincinnati Inquirer article explaining poor safety performance of the I-71-75 Bridge, AKA the Brent Spence Bridge. This bridge underwent eerily similar reconfiguration as that which the I-90 outer roadway will experience in less than 60 short days. Eerily similar, but less dramatic, changes than the I-90 upcoming reconfiguration. The I-71-I-75 Bridge reconfigured from three 12-foot lanes to four 11-foot lanes. The I-90 Bridge will experience the same reconfiguration, and at spots even narrower, to 10.5 or 10.5-foot lane approaches as that of the I-71-I-75 Bridge over the Ohio River. I'll quote from the Cincinnati Inquirer article explaining the resulting safety performance of that bridge. "One of only 15 major interstate bridges labeled 'functionally obsolete' for failure to meet safety and traffic flow standards. Seventh among those bridges for highest crash rate. Five times more likely to have a wreck than on the interstate systems of Ohio, Kentucky, or Indiana. Minor mishaps can back up traffic for seven miles." That's related to the narrow shoulders. "I dare say if a Ford or GMC executive were taking such risks, you and the public would be appalled. I applaud your legal challenges, and for the good of the region, wish for a positive hearing on April 7. But you also need more robust legislative action. The key to legislative action rests right here with our neighbor, Representative Cliburn. The problem is in Representative Cliburn's district, and therefore is dependent upon her, since she is Chair of the House Transportation Committee, to take the lead, or at least support legislation, to delay the I-Center Lane closure. For the safety of our I-90 Regional Corridor users, we need you to give public and private persuasion to Representative Cliburn to delay the I-90 Center Lane closure. Our leaders need flexibility to adjust from the four-lane reconfiguration of I-90 experiences, if I-90 experiences same poor safety performance as that experienced on the reconfiguration of I-71-75 Bridge." Thank you, and I see I have just, no, I don't have too much time, but I'd like to recognize Councilmember Grous. I did make it to the end of your April 17 newsletter update, and I would like to be one of the first to publicly acknowledge and show my respect for your tenure on the council as you conclude your 18 years on the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Richard Tate, that's T-A-I-T, 3312 81st Place Southeast. I am pleased to notice that you are proposing to take action with regard to the pedestrian crossing on Island Crest Way at southeast 32nd. I use that, I have used that crossing frequently over the last 20 years, and I have to say I've had several incidents there. People coming up that hill are keen to get home, often as not, although they shouldn't. They're talking to the folks at home as they come. I had an episode a few months ago that I'd like to describe to you to give an idea how these things can happen. I was waiting to cross from west to east, towards the high side. There were cars approaching in the fast and the slow, I'll call them the fast and slow lanes, you know which ones I mean. There were cars approaching in the fast and slow lanes. The one in the fast lane started to slow down, to stop. The one in the slow lane decided not to, and charged ahead. So I stood, let it go through. I then stepped out into the road to move in front of the car that was stopping in the fast lane. There was by now another car approaching in the slow lane. It was slowing down and still some distance away. Then Mercedes came up very fast in the fast lane, swung across into the slow lane in front of the car that was slowing to stop, in order to avoid the car stopped in the fast lane, straight at me. The tires squealed. It was very clear that he was not going to stop in time, but fortunately, he did have room to maneuver. I say "he," I didn't see the driver, either sex, but the driver did maneuver and passed me at a considerable speed, and then belt off up the hill at top knots. If I'd had a handout like that, it would have hit me. It was that close. I just mention this to emphasize the point that I do think that at that location, when I spoke to you several years ago, I recommended that we consider a pedestrian overpass that would fit neatly into the high ground on the east side of it. But if you're not going to do it that way, you should at least have a powerful red stoplight, not these sprinkly things that they sometimes put down nowadays, but something that will command attention in plenty of time for the people who are telling their wives at home that they're on their way, will have time to see it and react to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bassett and council members. My name is Victor Bishop. I'm the Chair of the Eastside Transportation Association. I live in Bellevue, and I'm here representing ETA, which is a private sector organization focused on transportation policy on the east side, East King County. I'm here to request that the Mercer Island, that you consider supporting the budget proviso for Senate Bill 5096 and House Bill 1157, that would delay the closing of the I-90 Center Roadway from Bellevue to Seattle for up to two years. This is the same subject that Mr. Cero was talking about. This proviso that ETA supports would allow time to, A, prepare an independent valuation of the roadway, B, evaluate the schedule to ask why it takes six years to lay down six miles of track on existing concrete, and C, do a supplemental environmental impact statement to consider the changed conditions since Sound Transit's final EIS was done six years ago. A number of things have changed, and D, do a serious evaluation of the safety conditions that R-8A is going to create, and possibly give you a little bit of a potential out if it shows up like the I-71-I-75 Bridge did in Ohio. ETA recommends that the council consider not only your own interests, but the broader East King County considerations of commuter access for the next two years to Seattle from Bellevue, Issaquah, some Hamish, Newcastle, Renton, Kirkland, and cities to the east along the I-90 Corridor, and also to consider the broader statewide considerations of freight traffic from eastern Washington. Capacity on I-90 doesn't just affect Mercer Island, it affects everybody in East King County, the state of Washington, and all up and down the Eastside Corridor. Clearly, a question to me of the schedule should, in my mind, be high on your list of rationales for a reasonable delay. There has never been transparent explanation of the need for six-year schedule. It's just never happened. We've asked Sound Transit dozens of times, they've trotted out the big, broad schedule and say, "This is it." The hidden issues clearly go way beyond installing the 50-year-old technology of postentioning the pontoons, or building two train stations, one in Marina Valley and one on the island, or laying down six miles of track. Sound Transit claims that they have the track bridges constructed, and two of them are in a warehouse. All they gotta do is truck them out and set them down. Why do they need six years? I think it's a valid question that you ought to be asking as part of this proviso. I urge you to request the legislature to take some of the heat of the mess that has been stirred up and pass this budget proviso in the 2017-19 budget. I do have a copy of the proviso, if you haven't seen it, that I could leave here. I'm not sure it's the latest version, but it's essentially the text of the proviso, and it would be in the budget portion of each, of the transportation budget. Thank you.
If you could leave those with the clerk?
Sure.
Should you distribute them to us, and that would be great. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor, and City Council Members. I am Elizabeth Buckley, and I live at 15 Brook Bay here on the island. And I'm here to speak to you also about the budget proviso, and I wanted to talk a little bit, so it's on the record again, as to what R-8A actually is going to look like for our region. And just so the public does understand, as of June 1, WashDOT is adding an extra lane on the I-90 bridges and throughout the tunnels leading into and out of Seattle. To do this, they will be reducing lane widths below the federal highway's recommendation of 12 feet on a federal highway. As we have said again and again, 11 feet to 10 and 1/2 feet is what they're going to be doing. And in the South Bore, Mount Baker Tunnel, those will be two 10 and 1/2 lane width lanes. And if you have ever been traveling that South Bore, I want you to do that within the next 58 days, 57, and see that there really is not enough space. We have video footage of fuel tanks coming through there. We have double-wide fuel tankers that WashDOT is allowing to cross upwards towards 200 a day, and so when you go through that tunnel, we have video showing that that truck cannot even fit in the lane there. They're going to add an extra lane. So at this point, my question, and I think many of the people here on Mercer Island, is do we want to put our children, that are going to be learning to drive soon, in harm's way? Do we want to put the mother on the cellphone with the children in the back in harm's way when she has no tunnel, no shoulder in those tunnels for slop? And so what we're asking is for you to work with Representative Cliburn, and we would really like to have a two-year delay, so we can see what R-8A looks like, because we have major concerns about the safety implications. And I'm from Ohio, so I know this bridge that Mike is speaking of. It is awful. It is nail-bitingly terrible to drive across it. It has no shoulders, and it has lane widths which will be equal to what we're going to experience, 11 feet. So when you have some time, get on YouTube and look up the accidents that occur on that bridge, and really consider that we're now at a point where we need to really ask that we step back and look at this project in its entirety, and especially with the reconfiguration of I-90. And then lastly, I wanted to offer help to the council and to our city manager. Save I-90 would like to help sponsor a town hall meeting at the community center. We have two dates that we think would work well, either a Sunday afternoon or a Tuesday evening, coming up with dates. And we would really like to have our Chief of Police, our Fire Chief, we would love to have our city manager, we'd love to have our representatives here speak to the safety issues, and we would really like to have our representatives at the state level here too, to answer our questions. We feel that we have the right, and our questions need to be answered about our safety, access, and mobility. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Sarah Smith, 7109 84th Avenue, Southeast. I wanted to come and talk to you as a regional user of the bridge, and my concern about the recent headlines about postentioning. I don't know which of you were here when the first bridge sunk. We were. We had recently moved from California, and I remember our family friends calling us. They'd been leaving messages, and we hadn't returned the call, it'd been a couple days. Then they saw on the news down in California that I-90 had sunk, and then more calls came saying, "So sorry to hear, you probably can't get to your home because the bridge has sunk. Let us know what we can do." Of course, we had the second bridge in place by that time, but it makes me pause, because I don't believe that this is an experiment like I-405 tolling. This will be a permanent change, and if it doesn't go well, we will be living, the entire Puget Sound region will be living with the ramifications of the decisions that we're making today. I don't see why we wouldn't ask for a new EIS. I feel that there's some hesitancy on the part of the city council here to ask the lead agency to look at that work. It would give us a sense of if, whether or not all the safety impacts had been addressed. When you see Judy Cliburn waving her packet at the Sound Transit, or the, sorry, the Transportation Committee down in Olympia, and saying, "Here, these were all addressed," you know, this is almost a decade ago, right, her paper, and yet Sound Transit is getting more money in October 2016 to study what was firm years before, and then asks for a budget of $225 million. I don't understand, and I think there needs to be more transparency, and I think we're in a position to ask for that. So I would like to ask our city council to do the right thing, and ask Judy Cliburn to be sure that all the safety concerns are addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome.
Mr. Mayor and City Councilman, John Tiscarnia, 5646 East Mercer Way. There's been a lot of discussion on this. Number one, I want to thank you for your time and effort and the lawsuit that was filed. I think that's a major point that, you know, we, citizens applaud your action there. Number two, we've spoken before about the delay in the enclosure of Island Crest Way onto I-90 with 1,200 cars, an hour at the peak time, so we need to push that. It's been said before, but I would reiterate that six years is too long to get this construction done, if it's well-planned and economically done. That's a major point. In the 2004 amendment to the 1976 agreement, it does comment on a subject we've talked about, and it says in Item 7, "Parking available to Mercer Island residents." And I know we have talked about that before and about other suburbs parking here, but we do need to reinforce the provisions there, which relate to the parking. So a lot of the comments have been said here, and I know you're working hard, but we need to kind of keep pushing the speed of the, excuse me, the length of time it's going to take to construct it, and then we need to also look at a lot of the safety issues. And the Island Crest Way onto I-90, I've mentioned, but we need to have the department come up with some creative methodology, and I think that the legal action and stopping construction will help them revisit that. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, a closed public comment, thank you. And we'll move then to our consent calendar. We have a lot of items on the consent calendar. Actually, you know, one of the items on the consent calendar, Mr. Tate, it's, you know, we don't always get to say we're listening, or that we're achieving what citizens ask for, but, Mr. Tate, you asked for a full-on stoplight at that intersection. I know staff started with something that was a rapid flash or some time ago, and shifted it over to a full stoplight, and that's on our consent calendar tonight. So you should be pleased to know that your request will be granted if we accept our consent calendar tonight here. So with that... Exactly. We responded immediately. I also noted that there are several things on here that are happy outcomes from projects that have been going on, and are street projects, and outcomes that are under budget and on time, or ahead of time, so excellent on that. So with that, any, rather than me blather, anyone want to pull anything off, or can we have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
Second?
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Great, okay. That moves us then to regular business. First item of regular business is Agenda Bill 5284, I-90 Loss Mobility Status Report. City Manager Julie Underwood, welcome. City Manager Julie Underwood, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just to reiterate, there are, I mentioned this last time, there are three lawsuits happening. There's the lawsuit by Mercer Island that was the breach of contract. Many of our residents mentioned no hearing is set for that date. I have the hard copy. Yeah. There is the Sound Transit lawsuit on our suspension of the shoreline development permit. That hearing is set for this Friday at 10:00 a.m. And then there is the third lawsuit, Washdott and Sound Transit initiated to strike down the moratoria that the council adopted, and that hearing is set for April 13th. And very recently, as of last Thursday, the city received notice that Sound Transit and Washdott is also appealing the Development Code interpretation. And as that stands, that will eventually make its way to the Planning Commission, but I don't believe a hearing has been set on that appeal at the moment. There are a number of regulatory strategies. You recall that you adopted the moratoria, in fact, and in fact, there are dates set for that. The first review by the Planning Commission is set for May 3rd. That is on the essential public facilities, followed by May 17th for the transportation concurrency and P-zone uses. They will have, let's see, a number, four meetings with the Planning Commission before they eventually make their way to the city council. Currently, that is scheduled for July 10 for the city council's first reading, second reading, July 17th. Legislative remedy, as many of you know, Representative Cliburn has a budget proviso that is in fact in the House budget that would grandfather the Island Crestway westbound I-90 on ramp for single occupant vehicles. I have had a chance to talk to Representative Cliburn about the budget proviso that many of our residents and area neighbors talked to you this evening about. And in my discussions with Representative Cliburn, she really felt that her proviso was a better, for her, where she'd like to focus. It's better for, I think, in her mind, probably support and passage by her colleagues. So as far as the budget proviso that's been talked about by some of our residents, and I've tried to speak with some of our residents one-on-one about some of the challenges in my conversation with Representative Cliburn, and then certainly in my conversations with electeds, frankly, around the region, that it has some challenges around really getting support, right? There are many cities in the region that want to see East Link project constructed. In fact, I think City of Bellevue invested over $100 million in the East Link project. Eventually, Redmond will get a station, Issaquah. So I mean, so anything that might appear as if we're stopping it, even though I know we have an interest in taking pause right now so we can try to negotiate favorably with Sound Transit, it has some political, it's not as easy as it might appear. It has some political challenges, and that's what I'm hearing out there. So negotiations with Sound Transit have resumed. You recall that Deputy Mayor Bertland attended the Sound Transit Board meeting where Board Member Balducci was introducing a motion that would really restart those negotiations. But rather than have those negotiations in the past, frankly, they were staff-to-staff negotiations, so Sound Transit, City of Mercer Island staff. This is a little different in that it's appointing three Sound Transit Board members and then three council members to sit down at the table and start those conversations. Currently, as it stood last week, the Sound Transit Board members that would serve on that are Chair Summers and Vice Chairs Marcioni and Strickland. And then our council representatives would be Deputy Mayor Bertland and Council Members Grousne and Sanderson. One of the things is typically, these presentations are me just giving you information, but tonight I'm excited to talk to you about this potential last-mile parking solution. Recently, we received a proposal from the Washington Business Alliance to develop a parking app that allows commuters to pay and park at nearby commuter stops. The cost of the proposal is about $43,000, and I would recommend moving forward and certainly would welcome your feedback on that. So any questions or feedback on that? And hopefully, we will get that investment back in some other ways, but...
I have some, but do you want to go there now, or did you want to...
Unless there's any other questions, I mean, obviously, oh, let me just mention about the Sound Transit and city negotiations. We're still sorting through the logistics and that sort of thing on that. So at this point, we don't have a meeting set for that.
Benson, go ahead.
Another question regarding the litigation. I mean, I think the first thing you mentioned is that pertained to the shoreline permit. And so can, you know, maybe a lot of people don't know this. Can you explain the recent action that the city took? And I guess one of the questions I have, because one of the basis for that decision by the city was the fact that we had representation about an addendum to the SEPA. Curious what the status is on that.
Thank you. And in fact, some of our residents have asked for us to push for an EIS. We have pushed for a supplemental EIS. We would like that. We think the project has changed, especially as it affects our residents and our businesses. So we have asked for that. They have been silent on that. Until recently, when in court on March 10th, they noted that they will be supplementing a SEPA addendum. We still, to this date, haven't received that addendum. And so upon receipt of that, evaluation of that, then we'll determine what we can do. We can do, we can amend the permit, the shoreline development permit, we could revoke it. If we go down that road, it would involve the shoreline hearings board. So it goes to an administrative body and would go through that process. But at this point, until we receive that data, we have nothing to go on, but they have promised us that we will get it in court, so I'm assuming that's...
I just remember that they promised that a couple of weeks ago at the hearing, and so we have no idea.
And it's possible this Friday, they'll mention that again. And we are moving to dismiss, of course, but we are, we do have the hearing set for this Friday on that particular item.
So you've outlined different activities that we're pursuing along different paths, political path, administrative path, and of course, we have the legal path. Can you outline for us, in the event that the negotiations don't go anywhere, that for some reason, we don't have the level of success we want with the administrative elements? I think the fundamental question that I'm hearing asked is barring all these other things, when do we end up in court? What's that date? Do you have the ability to give us any new information?
On the breach of contract, at this point, no, I am not at liberty at sharing that. We're still in a discovery phase. I know our attorneys are working with the judge's office on that, so when we have a better sense of it. But I'm, because that's privileged, I'd rather wait. But no, that is coming, and that is something we're anticipating will come in the coming And as soon as we have a hearing date, we will make sure we post that and get that made available to our community. I think that's, obviously, that's the, you know, we're spending significant taxpayer dollars on that, so we will inform the community about that.
Other questions? Okay. Julie, you asked for feedback on this last-mile parking solution, and I hadn't had a chance to look this over in advance or talk to others about it, so I'm coming at you kind of cold on this, and for that, I apologize. But I have the sense that, I mean, I love, I love where they're going. I love the concept. I love the idea that we get outside the box and sort of do Airbnb parking. It seems like a great concept to pursue. It doesn't, to me, feel like a city spend money on thing very much, though. It feels like a solution that should be happening, a problem that's happening everywhere, and we should be co-opting somebody else's solution and bringing it here, just as we wouldn't go in and invent Airbnb. We would, we would tell our folks to use what exists. To the extent that there's something particularly unique about it that we need, I'd be looking at what other, is that uniqueness really unique just to us? And then maybe we're paying for that if it exists. But to develop an app from scratch feels outside the range of cities commonly would do. And if, in fact, there was a real desire to go down that path, then I would suggest that maybe we should be trying to strike a deal where, fine, we're going to help support the development of this, but we want to be reimbursed on the back end if this deal actually amounts to something. But that puts us into a very different business than we normally would be in with taxpayer dollars, and at least with respect to a lot of other software kinds of functions. We've partnered with other cities around the region. I'm forgetting the name of the effort, but...
And I think that's possible as well. I know, I think Bellevue is frankly a leader in especially transportation technologies that are out there. I just went to a presentation last week with the police chief and Jason, our Public Works Director, and saw some really neat technologies available. It is unusual for us to be kind of almost in a private sector startup kind of concept. But I think there's a potential to use off-the-shelf software that's out there. Why is, you know, why are we proposing this? I think the distinction that I understand to this is really being able to, say, for example, you're, you live a block from the park and ride, and you leave your home, you go, you go in a total different direction, and you've got two perfectly great parking spaces in your driveway. The idea there is you could Airbnb those, rent those out to, but not just any commuter. The idea here is you would rent it out to another Mercer Island commuter. So it would really, so you really know who was parking, you know, on your private property. So I think that's the nuance, that's a little different than what's out there in the typical Airbnb realm. That's how I understand how we might structure the bid on this or the spec on this.
If I'm the homeowner, I'm not sure, I don't want just top dollar for my driveway, but that, I mean, I'm drilling down to a level here that I probably want to not go to right now.
And I don't know the specific, yeah.
I guess I'm, what do you, where are you proposing to go? Are you looking for a council motion to actually advance, to go ahead and initiate the project at this point?
Right. I'd like to return, that's right, I'd like to return to the Washington Business Alliance and say, "Hey, we're really interested in this. What's the next steps? What can we do to get this started?" And we have, of course, we have to have a professional services agreement. We'd have to negotiate that, and that's something I can do, but I would want to get your support in that because I think this is something that has great promise. And I would also like to see if, and Mike Kizer would be the project lead, if he could talk to his colleagues in Eastside Cities and see if there's support for that as well. So that's possible. We could share these costs.
Okay. Dan, I know you've got your finger on the button there, go ahead.
No, I mean, I've encouraged Julie to take a look at this option. It's, you know, we have for so long now been just fighting and fighting and fighting, and not saying we're not going to continue to fight, but this is the first thing I've seen in a while where we're actually at least looking at the idea of implementing or beginning the process of seeing whether it's feasible to implement something which could have a significant impact for residents on the last-mile issue. And this somewhat comes from a comment that Kirsten made months ago now about the idea of using potentially parking spaces that are available in some of the developments in the town center. Washington Business, or Washington Business Alliance has also suggested, as Julie mentioned, extending that to private driveways north of the freeway, and whether residents would be interested in potentially getting involved with that. And it's, I, having talked to David Giuliani, who's head of Washington Business Alliance, I mean, their goal is not to write a new app. There are apps out there, and so they're doing something that, that we don't have the staffing and probably the technical wherewithal to do, and that is scoping out what's out there, what's feasible, what kind of modifications would be necessary, talking to some of these companies, seeing whether they're prepared to look at our market and do something. And as Julie said, to work with other cities which have pretty much identical issues. And we so often sort of take what Bellevue has done and utilize that, and, you know, they allocate a half million dollars to deal with these types of issues, and which is great because they have the money to do it. We have not tended to take those kind of steps, and I think this is something that's relatively inexpensive, and it has the potential to have a significant impact for islanders. So I applaud Julie for bringing this forward and hope the council backs it.
All right, others, Debbie?
Yeah, I mean, so there's, there's a part of me, I think they asked council head on, and probably a part of me that maybe Dave chimes in, has a little bit of a software company mentality about that. And one of the first questions I think I would ask is, do we have a sense of whether or not our residents and our property owners would want to participate?
And that's, that's a big part of this discovery phase, is to engage our community on that conversation, yes.
Because I think if we don't have a confirmed level of interest or understanding what parameters, meaning legal protections that they would have, or the amount of money they would get per hours, or what happens if they come home and that person hasn't left their driveway. I think until we get to some of that, I would wonder whether or not we would even have sufficient demand. It seems like a project that is probably bigger than the city. I'm supportive of the city finding a partner who would lead it, who is, I don't want to say professional in the for-profit sense, but has the, has the business acumen, wherewithal, and resources to scope this more thoroughly. And in my mind, that would preclude $43,000 in allocated funds. I'm not closing the door, I just think there's some important steps that need to happen before I'm ready to go there.
Benson?
Yeah, I think, given the fact that the problem that this app is trying to address, again, applies to not only Mercer Island but other cities. You know, I also think that, you know, I don't know if you've looked at other funding sources other than other cities to partner with us, but, you know, whether or not Metro might have funds available. I mean, this is something that frankly, would be, I would think beneficial to Metro as far as getting potential new riders. So I guess until I hear more of your efforts in trying to find other funding sources, I guess I'm a little leery about giving you the go-ahead. But if the council decides to give the go-ahead, then I think, as Deputy Mayor Bertland suggested, I think phasing this in, having, you know, instead of $43,000 for the entire... I think phasing this in, having, you know, instead of $43,000 for the entire scope of work that is outlined here, maybe you do break it down so that, you know, you do an initial survey to see what kind of demand is there. But I really think that you need to go out and try to locate other funding sources, and not just to other cities, but there may be other grant applications somewhere.
Wendy?
Okay. I'm sorry, Julie, I'm not supportive of spending $43,000 on this, especially now. I feel like this is a sound transit problem to solve. In the middle of this lawsuit, I don't feel like this is a time to be looking at this solution. I also think parking is a regional issue that should be better addressed by a coalition of governments, or King County, or perhaps the private sector. We have Uber and Lyft, and I'm not sure this city is equipped to go down this path. I think we have other priorities and limited resources, so I'm not in favor at this time, and it would take a little bit, actually, a lot of convincing to get me to think this is something we'd be good at.
Dave?
Can't be left out. What I love about it, Julie, is I love the innovative approach and thinking of new ways to solve a thousand-year-old problem, or how long people have been parking things. So I love the innovation. What, I'm probably a little bit different, that I don't think that that is probably the place for government to fund, if the market demands it, and there's dollars to be made and a problem to be solved. I think that we live in probably the most problem-solving region in the planet Earth. So I would love to see the private sector jump in, and I think we would be certainly supportive, or I would be certainly supportive, of helping that effort along. I don't think it's our place to either manage that level of program or fund it. So that's sort of my thinking. But I do love the innovative thinking around some of the problems that we're facing, rather than say, well, the only answer is to pave a piece of land and put more cars there. So would love to see us keep going on that side. Thanks very much for that.
So I'm confused. You know, we are spending, we are spending probably $43,000 a week on this lawsuit, easily, and on lawyers, for which we may or may not get any return whatsoever. And this is the first time staff has brought to us a proposal that actually shows the city taking a leadership role in trying to solve what all of us have identified as the last mile problem, and particularly among council members who routinely support staff on things that come to this council, and we're shutting it down. And for an amount which is, in the grand scheme, an absolute pittance. This is not going to a private company. Washington Business Alliance is a nonprofit, just like the city. It's not shareholder-owned. This is not them trying to make a buck on this thing. This is them, we happen to be headed by, it happens to be headed by someone who lives on this island and cares about this island, who has taken the initiative to come to the city and say, I want to try to help, and put together a proposal which actually could make a difference for islanders. And I don't know whether it's going to ultimately be feasible. I don't know whether islanders will ultimately accept it. I do know that if you ask islanders whether they'll accept it, they're going to say, what is it that you're asking us whether to accept it? And it's also the fact that there are these parking apps which are springing up around the country. Now Mercer Island doesn't happen to be a large enough market where someone is just going to walk in here and say, here, I'm ready to serve Mercer Island, because we're, on the grand scheme, we're a very small market. So if we're expecting some Airbnb type to come in and say, God, I'm really anxious to do Mercer Island, it's not going to happen. We're 23,000 people. So I just don't understand. The one time we actually are presented with an opportunity to make, potentially make a huge difference, and, I mean, you know, Debbie, you talked years ago, you were talking about apps, and Bruce, you talk about Uber, and we talk about, you know, we keep wringing our hands, saying, we've got to figure out how we deal with this problem, and now we have the first chance to actually deal with it, and we say, no, let's let other governments deal with it, let's let the private sector deal with it. We don't want to get involved in this for $43,000. And I'm just, you know, I just, it seems the majority is going to go that way, but I'm just, I'm amazed. And it's just, because we will spend $43,000 on the most amazing things, and here we have a chance to spend it on something which could really help solve the parking problem that we're dealing with, and solve it in the short term, long before we're going to get any kind of relief from sound transit, long before we're going to get any additional parking. Even if we got the full park and ride tomorrow, that wouldn't solve the problem. We all know it wouldn't solve the problem. So this is the first chance we get to actually take a proactive step, and to think that we're going to blow it off for $43,000, I just, I'm mystified.
Okay. I was ready to move on here. It was pretty clear where the council's consensus was on this, but...
I'd like to reiterate what my position is, and that is, yes, I do think it's interesting. I think going from where we are of a couple paragraphs on a piece of paper to signing a $43,000 check, no, I'm not ready to do that. No, this is not a full business proposal. I do, I think Dave was spot on. I mean, I applaud the innovative approach, the reaching out to additional bodies. There's additional scoping and qualification work that needs to be done, as well as finding a solution or an owner for this app that sits outside of this city. And to say that Mercer Island isn't big enough, well, nobody comes in and builds an app just from Mercer Island. They come in and they look at this on a global or a national basis and say, there's a whole bunch of 23,000-person cities who have a park and ride who need a similar solution, and then they figure out how to go to market accordingly. So I can accept the fact that you're frustrated that we're not going there now. At least, that's my position. I don't know. I just would reiterate that I am open to having a further qualified proposal. I don't know if my fellow council members are or not, but I think you've overestimated what this represents in terms of timing benefit and minimized risk.
Julie, I don't think the door's closed here, and you can carry on trying to sort out a path forward. Clearly, you've heard an interest in the outcome. That was across the board, I think, in a parking solution that's outside the box. But there's not the appetite for this proposal as it stands right now, so. Is that enough? Need more? Okay. Thank you very much for that. Let's move to Agenda Bill 5273, NPDES Stormwater Code Update First Reading. Don't go!
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, for the record, I'm Patrick Yamashita, your city engineer. Here with me tonight is Rebecca Dugopolsky. She's a senior engineer with Herrera Environmental Consultants. Rebecca and her team has been helping us with this code update, and she and her team also have been doing the same with some other local cities, going through their code update process as well. I just want to mention that we just finished a study session with a pretty lengthy presentation that covered all of this already. We can either dispense with that presentation, or we can hit the highlights. In either case, the audience and those watching online would have the benefit or opportunity of looking at the whole presentation by looking at the study session. So with that, we'll do whatever you'd like us to do.
Well, I think certainly there's not going to be an appetite to repeat the things we did in the study session. It was well-covered, and for the public, if you are interested in that, watch the tape, watch the website of that. So Patrick, is there anything more you want to build on immediately into this part of the meeting? Or, I mean, I know, so Councilmember Grousne has mentioned a desire to discuss whether there's a way to integrate tree code into this in some fashion, so I think we need to have that discussion. I didn't hear that there were other things. I had a minor one. I see on page five that the lettering system has some holes in it, but, I mean, that's, you know, purely Scripner sort of things. Are there other things, maybe council, turn to the council, are there other things besides the tree question that you're going to want to talk about?
Yeah, I want to talk about the 500 versus 2,000 square foot change.
Okay. So we've got two things then to discuss. Why don't we, so Patrick, you're okay with us just going to these issues?
Yes, we are.
That works for you. Why don't we cover the 500 versus 2,000 first, and then go to the tree question after that? So Dan, you're bringing it up, so why don't you tee up your question?
So just the, as we talked about during the study session, that the existing code kicks in with some requirements, starting at 500 square feet of new impervious surface. And this code doesn't kick in until you get 2,000 square feet of either new plus replaced impervious surface. And I use the word impervious surface to describe hard work, or hardscape, or whatever you're calling it. And I'm not sure...
Maybe Patrick, you go to the slide that best, I'm not recalling one that really summarized that, but if you can get to one that does a good job of highlighting the difference. Yeah, that would be even...
Well, it's sort of, it's hard to tell on the agenda bill because of the way it's done. It's, I mean, it's better on the slide if you've got it.
Okay.
It's really on the bottom, page nine of the agenda bill. So if you see the stuff that struck out all the way at the bottom, it talks about result in a net increase in impervious surface of 500 square feet. So that goes away. And I don't know where the 2,000 thing comes in, or that comes in. But again, I'm just going off of Patrick's side. I'm not, I'm not proposing to... So it's just, this is the issue. I just, it strikes me that somewhere between 500 square feet of new impervious and 2,000 square feet of new plus replaced impervious, that we're losing something. And I'm just, and I mean, I vaguely remember when we did the 500, that that was, staff felt very strongly at the time that it was important to do that. And so I'm wondering whether, what makes more sense is to say that to have basically both of them in there. So you've got 500, you know, that the new requirements apply if you've got 500 square feet of net new impervious, or 2,000 square feet of new plus replaced impervious, so we don't lose anything that we now have. And I think that's, that way you cover it, because otherwise, I mean, this is anything but a perfect science to know whether, you know, and the example Patrick gave, I mean, that's one possibility. You've got a driveway and 1,000 square feet, and a house of 1,000 square feet, and therefore you get to the 2,000, but that's just, you know, that's just a hypothetical. It could just as easily be 900 instead of 1,000.
Right.
So I think that the thinking of staff back when we did the 500 square feet, I think that's, that was, there's a reason to keep that thinking, given the size of the types of things that happen on Mercer Island. And so personally, I'd like to have us keep that standard, while at the same time making sure that, you know, that the beauty of the new standard, it picks up replaced impervious also, which I think is important. So I think it's, I would encourage us to look at doing, having both applied under the new rules.
Patrick and Rebecca, you both sort of nodded as he said that, so I'm looking for any qualms, concerns, or just sound like a reasonable proposal?
I think it sounds reasonable. We can create sort of a hybrid threshold, using both of those, and whichever is lower for any specific project. If it either hits the 500 or the 2,000, then the requirements are required, requirements of the new manual.
So clarifying question, then. So are we going to keep the current 500 square feet and then implement the new 2,000? So we'll keep the old and add the new?
That's the new, the trigger point is either 500, the requirements, it's the trigger point.
That's what you're proposing.
So the new code is very restrictive, right? You have to do the LID and the BMP, and this more rigorous research and feasibility work. So would those requirements then be on the 500 square foot?
Yes. Because that's what the ecology, ecology's requirements for any kind of stormwater intervention are, these other things. And I'm not sure they're more rigorous, given the fact that the LID doesn't apply for much of the island.
So Rebecca, can you explain why ecology went up to 2,000?
They actually go higher than 2,000.
Yeah, so the 500 square foot was actually a Mercer Island threshold. It's not an ecology threshold. So previously, Mercer Island would only have to implement these requirements back in the 2005 manual on projects one acre larger, and that didn't really make sense for Mercer Island. So I think the discussion at the time was to look at the 500 square foot threshold, and just having that onsite detention piece. I think moving forward, there's a couple of different options you could do. So we could do this hybrid threshold, where that full onsite stormwater management requirements would kick in at either the 500 net new or 2,000 new and replaced. The other option would be to create a separate category that would just be for those projects that fall within that range. And some jurisdictions have done that, where they're looking at, it's, you know, they'll provide some classification, that this is a small project, this is a very small project, or however you want to put the baskets. But then, in that case, we could just say onsite detention is required for projects that fall within the 500 net new, up to the 2,000 new and replaced. So there'd be kind of a lesser requirement, where you wouldn't have to look at the full list, but just at the onsite detention, which is your current approach. So I think that's one option, or you could just have all the requirements kick in at that 500 net new.
So the net result of that, then, is the smaller projects don't have to do quite this rigorous thing, and it...
Right, right. So that's an option. I think the way that we lay that out, it's hard to say which would be clearer, but I think that would, that would maybe capture more of your current approach, would be to have those two separate classifications. So consistency with ecology, but still catching those projects that fall into that range.
Small, small, small.
And we can come up, we can come up with some terminology for what that might be, but yeah, some projects do small, and large, and medium, and if that makes sense, we could do something like that, or come up with some other language for that.
So I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get a, so I understood the proposal here was the requirements don't change, the triggers, a hybrid trigger gets created. The concept that sort of came out here, maybe at least, you know, in discussion at the moment, is two different triggers, two different sets of requirements.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. But lesser requirements for that smaller project. So to make things simpler, I think, for that smaller project that currently only has to implement the onsite detention.
So if we go in that direction, then we would need to both set, agree that the trigger is in place, but then also talk about what the new reduced set of requirements would be on that. Is that correct, or...
And I think the requirements would be the same. So for anything that falls within that 500 net new to 2,000, you know, it's hard to say how many projects fall within that, but for whatever project within that, that would meet, or that would be following your current approach and your current code. But for anything that then hits ecology's new threshold of 2,000 new and replaced, you would have to take a look at all the different options, so starting with the full dispersion, and then working your way down the list. And you may still end up at the same place. You may still end up at onsite detention, but then it's requiring you to take a look at what some other options might be before you get there.
And without biasing my comment too much here, do we end up with sort of a Frankenstein kind of thing, then, where we've kept the old code, which should have really been retired, as well as having the new code, and it becomes kind of this bigger, messier thing? Or should, or is that, is that not a burdensome thing to have both the old and the new?
Yeah, so I think that we've tried to clear things up by removing the reference to the 1992 manual. So currently, we're referencing all the way back to the 1992 manual, and we've cleared that up by keeping the sizing from the 1992 manual, and just having a sizing table that developers would take a look at. So we're pulling out that reference to 92 to avoid that confusion, but still having that sizing table. And that sizing table would apply to either of these projects. So anytime you hit the onsite detention, you would then take a look at the sizing table that's been developed by the city. So I think we're trying to get away from the Frankenstein approach, and I think there are ways that we can clarify it, so it's a little more clear.
Okay. So Dan, you've got your finger on the...
Well, I mean, I would actually like to make it simpler and just, and say that the same requirements apply to either 500 new square feet or 2,000 new and replaced. The idea is that the world is, the science has progressed since we last did this, and ecology presumably has determined that there are better ways to deal ecology presumably has determined that there are better ways to deal with stormwater issues than we were using back 10 years ago, whenever we last did this. And it's, I think it behooves us to adopt those. I mean, I, it's, you know, it ultimately, it ultimately comes back down to staff looking at the project and deciding which of these best management practices are appropriate. And they'll make the determination, presumably the smaller the project, the less the requirements are, but it's not a, this is not something which says you have to do the exact same thing in terms of dollar cost or quantity regardless of the size of the project. Everything ultimately scales to the size of the project. But I'm not looking for some, she called it a Frankenstein approach to this thing. I'm looking to simplify it in the sense of saying the same thing applies and, but it's still triggered. I just don't, I mean, we are, we have lots of smaller projects on this island and I, 2,000 square feet does not, will not pick up some, some of the homes that are being built because it's, that's, it's just not necessarily the case. The thing you get on this island is that people build something today and then they get their building permit and six months later they're adding a sidewalk and they're doing things which, or they're adding a deck which, you know, doesn't go through permitting. And it's, it's just, I'm concerned. We're going to lose something in this process that, that we now are picking up. And I mean, we just heard staff tell us that we went through a, and we all know, we went through a difficult winter. And stormwater is a serious problem. So I just would hate to see us lose coverage on an area which we know is a significant issue on the island.
Okay. Benson, we've got to land this one.
Yeah, no, I'm going to support Councilmember Grous' proposal. I thought his proposal was relatively simple. It got, I got confused by the response by staff when they started talking about applying the current code. And so anyway, I just thought that the proposal was simply to have a either/or trigger and then you would apply the new requirements. And so that made sense to me. And so if that's what's on the table, then that's, I'm in support of it.
Okay. Anyone else? Different options or one of these two options?
I'd say I'm in support of what Dan said as well and would love to move us on to the tree issue if we could.
Okay. I would support Dan's option as well. Let's call it four at that point. Do we need, in, we're going to have a motion to advance this. I always ask this question. Do we need specific, within the doing of first reading, is the direction we're giving on this issue enough right now or do you need more direction from us in order to get it incorporated?
Yeah, I think Patrick is fine. He'll bring back some new language for you to consider at the second reading.
Okay, very good. Okay, to the tree issue then. Dan, I think you've spelled it out pretty well. You want to?
Yeah, I just, I don't know what the answer is. And so I'd just appreciate if staff, when they take this back, would look at something which includes as one of the best management practices, something that preserves trees as a way of, I don't know what the word, I forget what the word you used before, but to absorb the stormwater. I mean, it's, we know that an average, one of these huge trees absorbs an amazing amount of water and, and much more so than a rain garden or anything else we're doing. And if there's a way of building into this code, something which says that a best management practice is keeping a tree, I, again, I don't have the answer how you do it, but I'd love that to be part of it. And it's not just, and it's not just on critical areas. It's, I mean, it's all over the city where you've got, you know, stormwater issues where, I mean, I mean, we heard, you know, I, without speaking specifically of John's point, I mean, that John doesn't live in a critical area. And so it's, I think that the whole issue of trying to capture the stormwater before it ends up in your neighbor's yard or in the city system is a laudable objective.
You, Rebecca or Patrick mentioned that there was already some reference to trees in the language. Can you point us toward that maybe or help us understand?
Yeah, so it's not in the proposed code, but it is in the Stormwater Management Manual for Western Washington. And the specific BMP there is new or retained trees. So you can either have a new tree that meets certain diameter requirements and there's different credits you can get, whether it's a deciduous or evergreen tree and then retained trees. There's another diameter you take a look at and whether it's deciduous or evergreen, you get different credits. The caveat with that is it has to be within a certain distance from an impervious surface. So you want to make sure it's covering your driveway or your house and preventing that rainfall from falling on those surfaces. So it's really capturing it before it hits the surface that it would run off of, rather than just a tree in the middle of your yard that's, you know, just capturing runoff that would land on your yard. So that is one BMP we could reference and we could highlight it more clearly in the code if that's of interest. I know City of Seattle went with that approach where it's kind of something that appears for all projects that they take a look at. And then King County also has a native vegetation retention BMP as well. Not sure how frequently it's actually implemented, but that's another source that we could take a look at in the King County manual. So there's a couple of different references out there that we could take a look at and bring something forward for review.
So, well, I guess I'm going to raise my concern and that is we are on the verge of doing a very engaged community debate about tree code. And so trees are going to be front and center and they of course are front and center in, you know, Title 19 of our, of our code. So having them there as well as we're going to do and already have the critical areas ordinance language, which addresses trees as well. It feels a little bit to me like it's cleaner to have fewer places where you have to go to get the reference or to sort yourself out rather than more. I hear Dan expressing sort of a, I don't know, belt and suspenders if, concept of, you know, if we don't have, we're not doing the CAO yet, so let's, let's add it here, but, and, but we'll get to the CAO not too far in the future. Julie saying it's far out in time. I think Kerry's intent was to do it once we complete the residential code. I think it's next up. So it's, it's not that far off. And to the extent that it's already in there to some extent, that sounds like a good thing. I guess I'm hesitant to sort of tack on a little bit without, without great thought as we go there. So that's.
But all I'm asking Bruce is for them to come back with ideas that we can think about. I mean, the critical areas ordinance obviously doesn't apply outside of critical areas. So it doesn't address anything in a lot of places where you don't have, I mean, a steep slope by itself is not a critical area under our code. So it's just, it's just, that's, if you look at the definition of critical area, it doesn't include, if I'm not mistaken, doesn't include just your, if it's a landslide area or it's a geological, geological hazard area, then it becomes a critical area. But if it's just, just a steep slope, it doesn't become.
I have seen critical area ordinance define a critical area as a slope.
No, I have too, but ours doesn't at this point.
But ours doesn't include that?
No, I don't believe so. So I don't, I don't know where that's going to end up. And I guess, you know, if we get to the point that we have a great critical areas ordinance, I may be wrong in that question, but that's my recollection of it.
I would think it would because, I mean, the whole island is pretty much a critical area. It looks like according to the work plan I dug up, it'll be initiated in the third quarter of this year.
So I mean, if it turns out we come up with a better idea in the critical areas ordinance to deal with critical areas, then we can deal with, then we can always come back and bring things, make things work together. And in the development code, I have no idea where that's going to end up. There's a lot of ideas going back and forth and at this point, I just don't have a clue where that's going to end up. All I'm saying is that right now we're dealing with stormwater and that's, and that's, that's what's on the table right now. And it's just, all I want to do is ask staff to look at what else is out there and see if there's something we can tighten up here to identify what we all, what we know is a specific problem we have in the island with trees being cut down that are impacting, that are causing landslide situations. So it's, it's not a, I don't know what the solution is, but I just think that this is, this is an opportunity we get only once every 10 years or so to go through this code and I'd hate to not take advantage of it.
Okay, others?
So I'm going to say we're talking about rainwater falling on roofs and driveways and I think we shouldn't over-engineer this because we're talking about trees that hang over roofs or driveways. To me, getting into the tree retention thing is, is something that our planning commission is already doing and isn't appropriate in this context. So I think it's identified in the BMPs. I don't think it needs to be drawn out into the code. I think we have other places where it's more appropriate and relevant and expected.
So I would second Dan's thought process and maybe, maybe this helps a little bit. It feels like it gives us another tool and in a point in time where we don't have the resolution of the residential codes surrounding trees, and it feels like that's an area where residents feel like we've sort of fallen short, no pun intended. It gives us another tool to address that immediately. And Wendy, I hear what you're saying and that surprised me when they said, well, it's mostly to address over driveways and roofs and things like that. But the truth of the matter is we're having trees removed in areas that are not designated critical, but they're slopy and then we're seeing landslides as a result. So, you know, to the mayor's point of belt and suspenders, yeah, maybe that is the case, but it feels like we're not necessarily over-correcting, but we're taking a step in exactly the direction that people have asked us to take regarding trees. And then if we can further address that in the, in the residential code, great, we can talk about this being duplicative and undo it at that point. But it feels like this is a good spot to insert that and be able to, to give planning an additional tool that they don't have today.
So I just point out, this is, I'm going to sound like I'm arguing against this more than I want to argue against this, but, but I do want to point out when you say we should keep trees to not have landslides, totally agree. But this is the stormwater runoff code that we're working on here, which is about how we slow down stormwater running off. And so I think we want a different argument for why we're dealing with trees here to make sure that we're, we're addressing the problem at hand on this if we're going to go down this path. So it's, I think it has to be, you know, it's nexus of relevance to the, to what you're, what you're trying to work on.
So then to make it more relevant, a slope of any grade which has, you know, fewer trees has a lower ability to absorb that water than one with trees, which is going to either absorb the water as it comes down from the sky or it's going to disperse that absorption over a longer period of time. And I think that is directly correlated to stormwater runoff.
It doesn't even need to be a slope, right? I mean, the tree.
It's non-slope area.
Tree slows down the water hitting the ground, the tree takes up some of the water. So in those two ways, it reduces the rate of stormwater runoff. I think for the purposes of this code, not related to landslides, right? This code's not about landslides.
Anything that keeps the stormwater from ending up saturating the ground instead goes, I mean, trees, I forgot the statistics, but it's amazing how much water a large tree absorbs. And it's not just in a rainstorm, it just absorbs a phenomenal amount of water on a daily basis and it just, it just absorbs it.
During, during the summer, if it's not a tree. Yeah, so let's, yeah, let's get some other voices here. Benson and then Debbie.
I think, you know, again, Dan's request was relatively limited and then I heard staff basically say that other, other cities have actually, you know, highlighted certain BMPs or whatever. I mean, that, I'd be, I'm in favor of at least having staff come back and show us what might be possible. It may, you know, I think we're trying to talk about specific language. It may simply be a reference to a particular BMP that highlights the need to retain trees in the context of stormwater. And so I think we should just go ahead and direct staff to do that. Again, we have a second chance to take a look at this and so I don't want to.
Okay.
Anyway.
Debbie, we're, so I've got Dave, Dan and Benson all of a, of a mind here. If you support them, we're done. If you don't, then we've got to figure out where we're going.
I'm going through my memories here, but, um, so I'm glad you put this up. Can you show us the first couple of slides in the deck? Because there was a slide that I'm, can you, is this the first, this is not the first slide in the deck, correct? Can you go back slowly, one or two? They had a picture of the concrete downspout. Because I'm getting, I'm getting to the point of the nexus, or maybe the slide is.
That was one, they only had one tree there.
Okay, because, because what I'm thinking about is, it says, what are some examples of lid BMPs? I was conceptually thinking about trees being in a similar category. So just as you would have a concrete downspout dispersment thing, I'm sure there's a word for it, you could arguably have a tree that would do that before it hits the ground. So in that context, I do feel like there is something of a nexus. As far as where I fall, I think I fall pretty much with Benson and that is, I would like to see the language come back. I think this, this is something that the community's talked about. I think there is a relationship between trees and keeping the water from going into the soil. So I'd be interested in understanding where the best practices are and some language that would capture that. So I guess that puts me with Dave, Dan and Benson.
Settled.
All right.
Okay.
So how would that show up in the code versus the BMPs? Can you just explain what that next step might look like?
Yeah, so I wanted to explain a little bit of the background behind how that actually ended up in this manual, because in the 2005 ecology manual, there was no reference to new or retained trees. City of Seattle did a bunch of research and that was in their 2009 manual. So ecology liked that approach, added it into the 2012, 2014 manual. But it's not, it doesn't show up on that list. When I showed the list of the different BMPs you take a look at, it's not on that list. So you wouldn't necessarily be taking a look at that until you reach your flow control threshold, which would kick in at that 10,000 square feet. So I think there's a couple of different approaches that I've seen other different jurisdictions take. Seattle kind of highlights this as a overall BMP that you would look at for all sites before you get into the three different bins, looking at your lawn and landscape roof and then hard surfaces. So I'll take a look at where that landed in their final code and that's, that's one option. Another option would be adding it on to the list itself. So you're taking a look at that and your, your list of BMPs that you're looking at. It's not going to get you all the way there in terms of controlling your flows, but it'll give you kind of a partial credit along your way to making your stormwater management work onsite. So I think there's, there's definitely a couple of different ways we could work it into the code and keep it fairly simple, referring to the more detail in the manual itself.
Okay. Do we, I think we do need a motion at this point and I'm assuming we're ready for that. So if somebody on page two would offer the motion as amended, I guess.
So I'll move to conduct first reading and provide staff direction to finalize ordinance number 17C-09 for a second reading and adoption as amended on June 5th, 2017.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll move to Agenda Bill 5276, General Sewer Plan Update. All sorts of utilities tonight.
From clean water to dirty water.
But that's not how I was going to frame it at all.
I don't follow basketball at all.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, deputy, Madam Deputy Mayor. Never had to say that before. That was pretty cool. I'm Ann Tenella Howe, Assistant City Engineer. And tonight I'm here with my, my team, my, my engineering team of Corolla Engineers, Laura Kamrick and Dan Reisinger, to give you an update or actually a presentation on it, I can't even talk, on what we've been doing to date to update the general sewer plan. doing to date to update the general sewer plan. The general sewer plan was last adopted in 2003, so it's fairly old. Since that time, there's been significant changes in the town center through growth and redevelopment. We've replaced a portion of our lake line sewer, yahoo. We also recognize that our system is older, it's nearing the end of its useful life, and it's also a very complex system. It's one that we may not fully appreciate, nor that we maybe fully understand. This updated plan is a 20-year plan that's focused on our long-term approach to our sewer system. So, tonight, we're going to introduce the plan and the work that we've done to date, and then the council, I think, as I noted in the agenda bill, the council will have another opportunity to, to review the work that we're doing on the plan at a future date. We have not set that date yet. So, the plan is recommending practices that are going to align us with industry-best management practices for the utility, as requested during last year's Public Works Department's audit. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Laura to give the presentation.
Thanks, Ann. Hi, I'm Laura Kamrick. I'm a project manager with Corolla Engineers, and it pains me to stand here right now with two minutes left in the Gonzaga game. I am a huge Gonzaga grad, lived with several basketball players, so I am, I hope you score me very high on the client service checkbox for being here. And if you watch your phone and you know who wins while I make this presentation, please do not tell me. Okay, so, as I said, this is Dan Reisinger, he is the planning engineer. I know, right? Right? Because it, like, literally, we were up, we were down, and I, like, stood up to come over, we were down by one, so don't tell me. Okay, so, ready? So, let's go through this quick. Because I have, I've got kids at home, I've got all kinds of stuff going on today. Okay, so, we have, like, five things that we want to go over on this presentation with you. Really, the purpose is to give you an update. I want to tell you a little about your system, what the background is, talk about the capacity, and we're going to focus on the capacity within the town center. Then we're going to talk about the O&amp;M and the recommendations, what you're doing today, what we think you should do. We're going to break out and talk about repair and replacement. It's kind of a new topic, you haven't really, you didn't really do this in 2003. It's really hot today in the industry, you're hearing it all over MPR about our system is aging. We'll talk about your system and how it's aging, and then tell you what the next steps. Currently, today, we don't have a CIP, we haven't done the financial aspects, we're just truly getting some direction from you as we move forward. So, what is your general sewer plan? Your general sewer plan is really, is a document that's going to guide you in what you need for the future. It's going to tell you what you need, it's going to tell you when you need it and where you need it. That's really the sole focus, and it's not something that your staff made up, it's something that's required by the state WAC. Department of Ecology has guidelines, they really have six things that need to be in there. Describe your existing system, what's the summary of your policies and criteria for the operation, maintenance, and management of your sewer system. You are supposed to do a capacity evaluation, yours is focused in your urban area of your town center. Look at your O&amp;M, that repair and replacement, then summarize it in a CIP. So, we'll start by talking about your system. This is a GIS map that we helped put together with the data from your city. It shows all the different colors or basins, and the flow areas show each of the flow basins throughout your city and how they flow off of the top and through your pipes and into those lake lines. They exit the island in two different areas, one in the north, one on the south, and your lake line is a very critical part. There's other jurisdictions right around you that have the same similar structures. This shows you where these, oh, this is, okay, all right. We had talked about removing this slide, and I was going to say on the last slide, so now you see where it leaves the two different areas through your system. So, I want to talk about capacity. Capacity is generated by the flow. Flow within your sewer system has two main components, the dry weather flow, which is truly what we call your base sanitary flows. This is not only your dishwashers and your toilets and your washing machines, but all that, dirty water and where it goes. But you also have wet weather flow. The le, the, the real issue with wet weather flow in the Pacific Northwest is what we call INI. And INI challenges systems as your system ages. When your system is brand-new, it's really tight, you don't have any direct connections, you don't have any broken pipes, you don't get any infiltration, but as your system ages, this is a key indicator that you're seeing additional flow and additional capacity challenges. So, we wanted to look at your town center, and we took your existing hydraulic model, and we updated it with all the right-sized pipes and all the new stuff that's there today. This is an exact screenshot of the model. You can see all the pipes and all the flow areas. We ran the 2001 November storm, which is one of the largest storms of record, through the hydraulic model. We put future land use over top of it, and we were able to determine if you had capacity. This is in build-out in the future. But before you can determine if you have capacity, you have to define what the capacity is going to be. How do you know if it's deficient? What's deficient for you might be different than someone else. So, we worked with your city staff, and we pulled together some key information, such as what is the design storm, what defines the pipe at being at capacity, and how we look at those force mains and your other pieces of your sewer system, and what about your pump stations? And I want to focus on explaining the criteria, which we call your D over D equals one, that determines if a pipe on Mercer Island is deficient. This is an example of a hydraulic profile, so I'm going to point to this screen with this laser. These are manholes, and this is true outfit from your hydraulic model. This is the flows within your sewer system, the blue, and you can see in this particular case, this particular manhole is surcharging. The hydraulic grade line is moving up in the middle of the storm, a future build-out within the manhole, which means it has a D over D, a depth over the diameter greater than one. If you look at this end of the sewer system, on this particular area, the D over D is less than one. This is what the city of Mercer Island would call at-capacity, and with incapacity, there's no deficiencies in this area of your system. So, your goal is to keep all, all the sewage in the pipe and not have any surcharging of your hydraulic grade line up your manholes. Reduces the risk and not have that water pumping up and down within the manholes where everything stays in the pipe. So, the key answer is, we were able to see that within your town center, you have just a handful of small areas that need improvement. This is primarily driven by increased flow from large rain events, not from the additional zoning that's going to take place, because you can see that these colors are the deficiency of the projects. So, they're actually not occurring in this urban redevelopment area, but as the flows from outside the area come in and come through it. And that's because, we'll show you later in the presentation, we're seeing the system aging, we're seeing additional INI sneaking into your pipes.
If you could, just go back to that for a second, just, unless you're, I mean, just quickly, what does red mean? What is?
Oh, those are just identifying the different projects in the bottom key. We just identified each of the projects by a different color.
Okay, so, okay.
So, that we could identify project one through project five, and then we could, we'll put them in a future CIP and identify, does it need to be increased from an eight to a 12, or a 12 to a 16, and how long and how much it would cost?
Okay.
That's a good question, thank you. So, let's talk about your O&amp;M practices, what you've been doing at the city and what is important for you to continue to move forward. You kind of, you have a very robust system, you have over 115 miles, you have over 2,400 manholes, 17 pump stations, and over 16.7 miles of lake line. As we talked about, it discharges to two different areas, to King County. This is a pretty substantial system for a community of 20-plus thousand. One of the best ways that your utility team is evaluating this is using a CCTV program. This is where you take closed-circuit TV and you run it down your pipe, and you look at what the condition is. We like to do this on the island every five years. We use a NASCO PACP protocol, that's how you can rate the pipe, through a one-through-five rating. Right now, the city currently contracts all this out, they're not doing it in-house, so they're hiring a contractor, they're getting the data back, both on CD and cameras and looking at the reports. We've also been able to work with staff to map where the sewer systems are on very steep slopes, as you talked about earlier, which lead to limited access. The challenge with these sewer systems on these steep slopes is that it's really hard for the staff to get there. It increases the amount of time, which decreases their efficiency, and has limited amount of solutions to actually try to put repairs and solve problems in these areas. One of the key things that the operations team has been trying to do is expand the backyard main program. You have handfuls of back, you have mains in backyards, like this one that's right here along the edge of a fence in someone's backyard. So, we tried to map these and look for ways that we can relocate, or map, or try to look for other ways to relocate this public sewer line out of people's backyards, which then just limits the risk of claims against the city for failures and other issues with this line. One of the last elements that we looked at for the O&amp;M program was doing a thorough condition assessment of all your pump stations. This was actually done by your city's staff, and we summarized it and worked with them to determine which piece of each of the lift stations they felt needed to be replaced. Was it a structural challenge, a pump challenge, or when did it needed, when did it need to happen? We summarized all this into what we call an annual O&amp;M program. This is New Year Last Plan, pretty much focused on big capacity projects, and we wanted to assist staff with looking at, what are the annual programs you need to be operating and maintaining the system? How should you invest them, and what should be the best standard practices of care? And those can be summarized on the slides that we previously presented, which is continue to do CCTV and perhaps update the number of feet that your miles you're doing every year, expand your backyard mains program, and implement that pump station renewal program as you did your condition assessment and your tracking. So, now, let's move to talk about your R&amp;R. I wanted to summarize right off the bat to say that you have a lot of pipes on your island that were installed within the same 20 years of the system. So, if you look at what the remaining useful life of the pipe is, just on a paper exercise, you'll see that in the decade 2020, all these blue pipes need to be replaced. They all will be reaching their remaining useful life. It's pretty, it's pretty daunting to look at that many, that much of your system and think that you need to go out there and slip-line it, repair and evaluate it. So, we wanted to help put a prioritization with this just on paper. So, we looked at what the age of material is, we used useful-life assumptions based on the records the city has, we went and looked at all, we looked at the CCTV inspections, looked at those that rated very high, the maintenance history that the crews have out there, and we were able to help prioritize that only, that 130,000 lineal feet needed to be replaced at a higher than other areas within your system. And as we talk about the colors, the red areas are where are these high prioritization areas. This is based on what size the pipe is, if it fails, how much flow would be impacting the neighbors and the public environment, can you access it, and what are the known maintenance issues? This is a paper desk talk exercise by taking the city's records, and we urge the city to start prioritizing and looking at these red areas as they move forward, and we put this into our, into the program for, for you. So, this looks at the pipes that you'll need as you move forward, but what about your pump stations? Just this year alone, you've had overflows at some of your pump stations into the lake. The pump stations are reaching their capacity, and there needs to be additional flow monitoring and evaluation of these pump stations to see truly what is the root cause of the pump station. Is there additional growth within the boundary that's causing increased sanitary flows? Are we seeing increased INI? Are we just seeing the system aging? Or is there other issues that are happening within the system that are making these be a higher priority? The three areas in the red are areas where you've seen capacity challenges and overflows, and the yellows are ones where staff is very concerned, operations, and would want to continue monitoring. When the key areas that we need form, yes?
We had done something in conjunction with the county about five years ago, an INI study. I, I have no idea what, how that plays into what you've been talking about, but is there a connection between what came out of that study and what we're, what this is?
That, that particular INI study was a pilot at the time that the county was, was operating for us, and their area of focus was the East Seattle neighborhood. Out of that project, we were able to get all of our pipes lined. It was Patrick's project, so I'm kind of, kind of grasping at this point. I believe that out of that pilot, we lined, we were able to line the sewer mains in the East Seattle neighborhood. So, I guess the, so, it, looking at this map and looking at the previous map on the pipe system, doesn't necessarily have any correlation. The piece that is similar, though, is that the INI that we were trying to correct during that East Seattle project, you know, similar types of activities like pipelining, looking to private properties, and finding out where maybe roof drains might be connected to our sewer system inadvertently, how we're, how we might be collecting groundwater into our sewer system, which causes increase in flow that really shouldn't be going through our system.
Is, is pipelining an alternative to pipe replacement, or?
Yes.
So, when you talk about that slide, which had 400 some odd thousand, are some of those just a question of, I should say just, is it a question of lining the pipe, or is everything a replacement?
I think the most important about this slide is that these are the pipes that will reach their remaining useful life, and there's a handful of different ways that you can mitigate that. You can replace it, you can line it, you can, you can determine that you want to not replace it and wait, and then take the risk later when it fails. So, really, it's just telling you that it's kind of like a car, it's getting really old, and you need to make some decisions.
So, is the cost of lining a pipe a lot less than the cost of replacing?
Yes.
And that can be done just with a machine that goes through it?
Yep, and there's several different, different, different strategies that they use to do that.
And so, as part of your work, are you going to be giving us recommendations to which pipes we should line and which reline and which should we replace?
No, the scope of our exercise, our study is to tell you which pipes to focus on, and about how much those different, how much it would cost to replace those pipes versus slip-line those pipes, to give you some tools as you move forward in your CIP planning. So, just because they're red doesn't mean you want to run out there today and replace or slip-line that. These are the ones you need to start looking at more frequently and evaluating and monitoring them.
And then, so, and then how does, where does, so how does staff turn that into a CIP program, some of which we might be replacing, some which may be relining it? I mean, I'm just trying to, just try to pull the pieces together here.
Okay, so, what we wanted to do for staff was help them understand that at the moment, we don't have a hydraulic model of the main part of the island, we do have a model, like we talked about of your town center. So, we don't have a way to delineate if the capacity is appropriate for these pipes. We wanted to let them know when these pipes might reach their remaining useful life and what type of repair and replacement program you should have. So, the first thing you would do is take all the pipes that are in red, and you would go and make sure that you have new CCTV tape on them, and you've rated the NASCO standard for each of them. And then you would look at those NASCO, and if you have pipes that rate, like, very high and they're very critical, then staff would probably want to go out there and take a coupon or a UT sample and evaluate, should we replace the whole pipe? Is it structurally damaged? Is it an AC? Or can you just simply slip-line it? This is the first step in setting a program together so that you can start looking at what the different options and methods are out there. So, we left off on pump stations, and I think it's really important to note that the city needs some improvements with their SCADA system. The SCADA system is essentially the brains behind the pump stations that tell staff what's happening. It also helps so that you can have longstanding records of how long pumps are pumping, when they're pumping, and what's happening, specifically because you have a long lake line that pumps from pump station to pump station as it moves around. And we would really like to encourage you to continue your improvements with your SCADA and your pump stations, so you can get the right equipment that can store and transmit the right information for you to make some good decisions. The one piece of the project that we did not look at is what is the condition of the lake line? And this is primarily because we had, there's some substantial access limitations, it wasn't included in our scope to look at it. And before staff runs out there and starts making some big decisions on, should we replace this section, should we, you know, just simply improve it in place, there needs to be an inspection and assessment of which pieces of the line need to be looked at when. They need to develop some repair and replacement strategies, and then prioritize those with risk again, and then put those in a longstanding CIP. A handful of these projects, they already have budgeted. What we've done is really recommend that they look at that collection system, those R&amp;R pipes, and they go out and start looking at those to figure out which ones they need to start repairing when. There's four pump stations they need to look at immediately and do some flow monitoring, continue to get SCADA improvements together so that you can have the information, and implement a comprehensive lake line condition assessment. Already, and as part of our exercise, we've encouraged them to go out there and look at how to access this lake line. Can you get to each of these pump stations from through the neighbors' yards and through the backyards? Reach four at the top of the island is, is a, there's a feasibility study proposed on that, it's in the similar reach that King County's currently working on. And then part of that would be to install and look at special catch basin improvements so you can implement some of the initial catch basin before it gets into the main So, in hindsight, or not in hindsight, but what we did is not run out there and look at a bunch of big capital capacity projects, but we wanted to put together more of a at a bunch of big capital capacity projects, but we wanted to put together more of a medley of projects where as you move forward, so you have the capacity within the town center, you have a rare repair and replacement, and these O and M. We're going to pull all these together in what we're going to call a capital improvement program, but it's going to have all these different elements. And then we're going to work with the city's own team to do a financial evaluation. They will look at what the impact to the rates and the charges will be if you were going to implement these different CIP scenarios. And then we'll come back to you. We'll present the capital with the short and long term, and staff will work and present the financial evaluation. Once you pull all this together, when we pull it all together, then it needs to go out for an agency review draft. It goes through a real SEPA process. All your King County and adjacent communities will want to review and have knowledge and understanding of what you're proposing, and then it will come back to you for final approval after it gets public input, so you can see what the agencies and the SEPA comments are before you approve and move forward. And that is the end of our update.
Okay, questions?
I have a question for Jason. Does the SCADA thing work with your asset management software tool that you implemented?
So Jason Kitner, Public Works Director. So you saw some stuff that's in the works right now, and so our team has been working with Crelo for the last year, and so we were able to get some of these elements into our capital program that we knew were coming down the pike. And yes, the SCADA system is currently out for solicitation, yeah. And I think we actually got stuff back, and so we're in the process of reviewing now. So yes, the idea is that it will be harmonious amongst each other, homogeneous.
That's your homogeneous is the word you want there. I'm not sure harmonious is either.
Just one quick question. This may be for Jason, maybe not. Do we ever do a seismic risk of our sewer system? I know we talked about that in Public Works for water, but I don't know if we're, especially the lake line.
Not that I know of. I don't think we have on the sewer side. On the water side, you're right, but not on the sewer side.
Okay. Anyone else?
Don't tell me it's...
No.
Hold on a second.
All right. Thank you very much. And Dan, you got off awfully easy there.
Thank you.
Well played, sir.
It was the tie. Laura didn't say, but she had an option to potentially go to Phoenix, and she's like, if that happens, you have to present. And I'm like, okay.
And I showed up at the office this morning, and everyone was like, oh my gosh, you're here. You're running the worst of anything.
Above and beyond the call of duty.
I told you guys, give me a chat.
Thank you very much for your dedication to sewer. All right. And anything else? By the way, a wrap up from you?
No, that is it. Thank you very much, and we will be back again at a date to be determined.
Okay, sounds good. This certainly looks like important work that is something that we probably should have taken on a long time ago, and we're taking on it now, and that's better than next month.
You did the sewer lake line thing.
Yeah, but that was one tiny piece of this whole total.
It was a big piece.
Okay, council members, we're going to move to other business. We have council member absences first. Somebody want to move to excuse Mr. Sanderson?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Planning schedule.
Hopefully, I can find my PowerPoint.
This isn't working for you, Julie.
Is the game over at this point?
Yes.
And did it end happily for the local team?
It was like one point away, and all of a sudden, it came. Somebody told me that.
There was a time when there were council members actually, and I was not one of them watching games.
Oh, really?
Watching games with this.
So what's your issue?
How do I get it up on the screen?
I pointed no fingers. I know Mr. Lizzo had a time or two.
It's a special button. Like, do I... You know, sometimes it's like a function. It's on something. Did it? Did this? It was just up on their presentation.
Oh, weird.
It's not even connected.
Well, this is, this is... That's dying. That's dying. So, here.
I have it on the screen. It's just working. It just seems to be up on the screen.
While they're working on that, let's go ahead and pick up a couple of others. So board appointments, none tonight, and council member reports. Let's go ahead and do those, and then we'll circle back. Dave, you want to start?
Yes, I have none. Thank you.
All right. That was short and to the point. Dan?
No, nothing since last time that I can recall.
GMPC meeting last week, and nothing monumental.
Okay. Wendy? Nothing. All right, Benson? You got a five-minute report for us here?
Immigration meeting.
Microphone. Microphone, Benson.
So on March 29, our chief, Ed Holmes, sponsored with the assistance of some other folks on the island, a forum or public discussion on immigration issues related, and talked about some of the police department's policies because there's a great deal of concern about the activities of ICE agents. And so anyways, a great discussion. I think nobody really knew how many people would show up, but frankly, this room was packed, and so it was a really good discussion, and people were very appreciative of our chief, and gave him a lot of kudos for basically starting this. And so anyway, I think we're very fortunate to have Chief Holmes, who frankly takes a lot of initiative to focus on diversity issues and things that have concern to the community. That, and I also attended the Leap for Green on April 1. It was pretty well attended as well, and so a lot of hard work from... Kudos to Diane Mortensen and the folks at the Parks and Rec, and all the volunteers that helped staff a number of booths.
Excellent.
Yeah. City manager and I attended immigration event put on by, sponsored by the county, and Dow in particular, and our chief was there as well. So that was good. That was an opportunity to hear from some different regional leaders in area of immigration issues, and so that was some time well spent. Wendy, Julie, I, anyone else? Attended the SCA dinner this past week, where our Attorney General was the speaker, and that was a nice opportunity to hear him and, of course, do the usual hobnobbing with their SCA members. So those are the two that I attended. Benson, I was glad you were at Leap for Green and had a chance to report on that, because I was curious, and sorry that I did not get to attend that this year. Okay, with that, we able to do our planning?
Yes, and in fact, I wanted to, I've asked Scott if he'll help present. These are two big items on his plate, the residential development code. I've heard from council members wanting to have more study sessions on this particular work plan item, which I think is a great idea. So Scott, will you walk us through? And we would like your input tonight, and this is still early, I think, in scheduling that if you have different thoughts about how you'd like to do this, we'd love to hear it.
Okay. On the screen before you is proposed schedule. It's out just a little bit from where we originally thought it was going to be, but we believe it gives the planning commission enough time to have meaningful discussion of what's turning out to be some fairly controversial items. So as you mentioned earlier tonight, mayor, public hearing, the planning commission's public hearing on the draft code will be this Wednesday, April 5, 6 o'clock at the community center is when that begins, if anybody's watching. And then they'll...
Pardon? Sorry.
It is a hearing. It is a hearing. But it's an actual hearing.
I was corrected. I was told there was not a hearing. It's a hearing.
Yeah, it's an actual hearing. And the intent is the planning commission is just going to sit there and listen rather than have discussion. But they might have discussion if the hearing, you know, if we only have an hour and a half worth of testimony, and they've got some time, they could start discussing it, but we're anticipating it's just going to be a hearing. Then they will reconvene two weeks later, on April 19, to discuss what they heard at the hearing and essentially all of the public comment they've heard on the draft, and then potentially give staff some direction for what to put in a final draft for them to look at. They take that back up May 3, in what we're calling a preliminary final draft, so we'll take commission direction from April 19. Any other changes that, you know, we believe should be made if there's some consistency things in the code that the planning commission didn't check, we'll take care of that at that time. And then a new item is May 8, which is the second Monday of May, for the city council and planning commission to have a joint study session. And the purpose of that meeting is for the council to start seeing the final draft. Again, it's still preliminary at that point, and have some discussion with the planning commission, find out what the planning commission's thinking, you know, why they are going a certain direction on various items, and potentially if the council, if you all say, hey, that doesn't make any sense to us, then you can give some direction back to the planning commission to maybe consider some other items. May 17, next planning commission meeting, is when they would hopefully finalize their recommendations and make the formal recommendation to you. Then it comes to council. June 5 would be your first reading, and then the second Monday of June, you would hold a public hearing. You did this with the town center. I don't know about you, but staff felt that was a successful event, just to have the public hearing for the council. June 19 would be a two-hour study session where you could talk about what you heard at the public hearing. We're thinking maybe that would be also a good opportunity to invite planning commission back to that study session potentially, so that you could converse with them about if you hear something totally different at the public hearing, at your public hearing, then where the planning commission's going, maybe have a dialogue with them about did they consider these ideas and why did they not go with those ideas. We'll encourage the planning commission to continue to stay involved in this as much as possible until you're done with it, which tentatively would be July 10, would be your second reading and adoption. So there's a proposed schedule for getting to the end of this project.
Questions, council members?
And I have other slides on other items, but do you want to just probably just talk about this, and then we'll move on to the others?
We'll do this right now.
Okay.
Of the many emails coming through and input that we're getting, is there going to be some sort of tracking sheet, kind of like the town center, so we can see the narrative input that we're getting on the specific issues?
Yes, yeah, yeah, it's exactly what we're doing. It's a, I think it's 11 by 17 sheets, might be legal size, but they're folded at least, that you'll get all that information.
And will it be kind of a staff analysis, or is it just going to be all laid out?
Well, we can do what you want. We're not putting any staff responses on that. What we're trying to do is summarize people's comments. And I will say, I think earlier in the process is when we were getting the longer sets of comments, when people were trying to weigh in on the scope and maybe some initial ideas. Now, what we're seeing a lot of is basically sort of form emails coming in. So you may have a couple dozen people basically saying the same thing. Maybe they're rewriting it in their own words, but they're basically saying the same thing. And we're just trying to summarize that in what's becoming a very large document. That's also online. We do update that periodically online.
Wendy, were you thinking of trying to have the staff divine some intelligence out of exactly what Scott said? We've got these form letters that some seem to be a result of some disinformation that has been out.
From perspective, right, but... Yeah, so, right, I get we're getting lots of form letters. I get we're getting lots of modified form letters. A lot of people are churned up about this on many fronts for lots of specific issues, and I can sort of start trying to track where I'm seeing the feedback. I can also do my own research on what's happening in Bellevue and Issaquah and Kirkland, and I'm kind of looking for an overall kind of, I get what the planning commission's doing. I'm also trying to get a pulse of what makes sense and also kind of legal framework around what's at stake and what's not, what is this negative impact to my property values question, right? So try to make sense of that with this process, the input that's coming, and the legal framework of land use. It's quite complicated.
I mean, if you look on the city's website, in the planning commission agendas, first you'll see probably about 100 pages of public comment that it's already, every planning commission meeting, city staff updates the list of public comments. So if you want to get a flavor for all the public comments, it's all there on the city's website already. You don't have to wait till June to get that, and you'll have the same information the planning commission has, which is what we've got to go on. If you want to look at what other cities are doing, then you can look at some of the early presentations that Evan did to the planning commission, where he summarized codes from several other cities, and he continues to do that. So all that material is there on the city's website that's accessible to the public as well as the city council. So it's there. You just need to look for it.
So I do look for it, and it's very complicated, and it's hard to synthesize into actionable steps.
Well, it's what the planning commission is having to deal with, and it's the same information they have. My guess is if it's good enough for them, it should hopefully be good enough for us that we don't need to have staff yet do another analysis that hasn't already been provided to planning commission.
Can I suggest maybe, like, your point is well taken. There's a lot of material there, and anything we can do to help any council member wade through it, we're happy to do that. My suggestion is to wait until you find out what's coming out of the planning commission, because I do know that there already, there are already things in the current draft that will be changing. Planning commission's already said, we don't like X, we want to do Y. But in order not to confuse people, we haven't produced the new draft yet. Okay, so...
To that end, I mean, it sounds a little bit glib, but I'm sort of practicing active avoidance of the whole thing. My feeling being that there's public, we're very worked up about what they're seeing, but until it actually is a recommendation to us, we would be chasing after threads that may disappear entirely, and better to just wait until they've arrived at a conclusion and hand it to us, and then at that point, we'll have to go to, we'll have our work cut out for us to really figure it out. But I feel like anything before that is time that's not as efficiently spent as it could be. So that's the approach I'm taking. Benson?
You know, I guess, I'm one of the, I think a number of the city council members have sent emails to Julie asking for more study sessions. I, you know, I think, I don't like the schedule here, because it only looks like we have one opportunity to have a study session before recommendations are finalized or what have you. I guess to the extent that the planning commission can actually sort of develop some draft recommendations, subject to change, of course, but I think the earlier we have an opportunity and the more opportunities that this council has to talk in depth with the planning commission, I think the better. I mean, I think what we don't want, I think people have, you know, criticized or at least, you know, hearken back to the town center process. You know, the council just basically got a lot of data, a lot of information at the end, and so I think the concern is let's, you know, try to get more information to us earlier and have a discussion with the planning commission. So I would love to see another study session sort of sandwiched in there before we get the recommendations. And so that's my own comment. I don't know exactly when or whether or not that's possible, but I definitely think we need more than one study session before recommendations come to the city council.
You've got a, on the May 1, you've got a central link cable franchise, which might be considered secondary to residential development. I don't know what, how time sensitive that is, if you wanted a second one. But the other thing is, Scott, it seems to me that the June 5, 12, and 19 are a little bit backwards in the sense that normally I would have thought you'd have the study session on the 5th, so that when we get to the public hearing... session on the 5th, so that when we get to the public hearing on the 12th, we have an eye, we have a better idea of what the public is talking about. And then the first reading comes on the 19th, because the first reading typically is our opportunity to direct staff to make changes, to come back to the second reading, and that should presumably be based on the results of the public hearing. So I guess what I'm suggesting is you reverse the 19th and the 5th in that thing to, so it goes aligned more with the way we normally do things. But I'm, and the only other comment I make about Benson's idea, and I have absolutely no objection to it, I, I mean, I have been going to the Planning Commission meetings, so I have a sense of what's going on. It is very complicated, and Planning Commission has taken six months to get through this. And the notion that in a one-hour or two-hour study session, we are going to get anywhere close to their understanding is not realistic. So I would encourage staff, as they approach this study session, to provide the council with some pretty decent reading material in advance. I mean, we tend to sometimes start a study session with like two or three-page agenda bill, and then have a very nice PowerPoint during the study session. This will not lend itself to that.
Just so you know, I see, May 1st, we have our regular meeting. May 8th would be a special meeting, and they were setting aside three hours for that. So, you know, at least it's much more substantial than a 60-minute.
But, which is fine. I just, I just hope that, it's really important, I mean, and I sent Julie and copied Benson and Jeff this morning on just a preliminary list of some of the more significant issues. These are not easy things to understand, and, but they're all ultimately very understandable. But they, it takes, staff, I think, needs to just lay out in a couple of paragraphs for each issue, what's going on, the current code, the change, and maybe a few sentences on what the reasoning is of the Planning Commission, what they did. And then you get a context. If you hear it for the first time on the PowerPoint from Scott or Evan, you're going to be floundering. I mean, I think that's your experience with the Planning Commission. The first time they hear it, it's sort of like, they're just, their eyes glaze over, and then after two or three times, then they understand what's going on, and they can have a really good discussion about it.
Yeah, no, I agree with you 100%. I think, you know, part of our job is going to be educating council members outside of all these meetings. So before the meetings, but I think I, what I'd like to do is wait until after April 19th to figure out if I can, if we can discern what direction the Planning Commission would like to go on certain issues, and then we can start providing you some of that background material. Understanding it might change, because they still have one more meeting before they meet with you, but at least on some of the major, and, you know, and we would focus on the kinds of issues in Councilmember Grouse's email, or the 10 or so issues listed. And those are the major ones that we get you some information on beforehand.
So I think that the exact details of what comes when will have to be somewhat organic. The clear message to me here for all the council is keep your Mondays free, because we're going to need more than the regular number of meetings to get through this, and in that May-June timeframe.
Yeah.
It's likely we're grabbing the other Mondays.
Yeah, and it may make sense to do that study session, June 5th. As I was looking at that, I thought that made sense. We just have to juggle some other things on the agendas to try to get that to fit. So we'll go back and take a look at that.
Okay. Anything else, council members, right now?
Well, I would call out now, and I'll call out again, that I will be gone July 10th for a work trip, and potentially July 17th as well.
Okay.
So, any concerns? I'm sure my, my perspective will be heard at the first reading and will not be heard at the second as currently scheduled.
Okay. Should I move on to the next?
Yeah, please.
Okay. These, I think, were a little bit faster. We just wanted to show you sort of the overall picture. So another important item, I wouldn't say it's a big item per se, is I've been working on an ordinance that would change the appeals that currently go to the Planning Commission would be sent to the hearing examiner. That's one of the major things. And there's also some proposed process changes that, again, result in more things going to the hearing examiner rather than the Planning Commission. Without getting, I'm not here to get into the details of that. The Planning Commission held their public hearing on Wednesday night, and we're still working through it. But the proposed schedule on that is we would bring the next draft to the Planning Commission April 19th. I don't know if they'll be able to finalize their recommendations at that point. They really didn't have a whole lot of time to discuss this on Wednesday, but I didn't hear any major changes from the commission that I need to implement or include right now. But again, I don't know. They may have some other changes they'd like us to make. But if they do make their recommendation April 19th, then we would have you do first reading and then second reading in May. Okay? So that's the timeframe there. Again, I'm not sure that April 19th will be done, but if we are, then that would be the timeframe. This is important to get done as quickly as possible, because we really would like to see that process changed. And I'll get to it in a few minutes, but we do have two appeals right now that have been filed, and both of those have to go to the Planning Commission right now. So what we're doing is we're taking up valuable Planning Commission real estate on some of these other important items by having them deal with appeals. So the quicker we can get this done, I think, the better.
Okay.
So we just called this next one moratoria, and these are the three different ordinances that would implement essential public facilities code amendment, or code amendments for essential public facilities, transportation concurrency, and allowable uses within the I-90 portion of the public institution zone. We sort of split this up, I think, handling three on one evening with other agenda items like residential development code isn't possible. Just the meetings just become way too long. So what we're proposing here is we start with essential public facilities. This would be planning commissions. I put first review. It's really, think of it like your first reading. They would do that May 3rd, and come back a couple of weeks later, talk about concurrency and P-zone uses. So then they would have talked about all three. And then June 7th is when they would do their public hearing on all three. I think that's doable. Then they come back on the 21st, and they would make a recommendation to you. Then you would get it July 10th for first reading and July 17th for second reading. The two moratoria expire, I believe it's August 11th. And what we're, we're thinking that this is a pretty tight timeframe, but this is what it is. So just wanted to throw that out there and show you that the Planning Commission, while they're not working on residential standards, will be working on these things.
Anything else, council members, in terms of feedback?
So that May 3rd date might end up slipping because of the appeals. So we have, we have two appeals. One was on an approved impervious surface deviation, and the other is the code interpretation appeal filed by Sound Transit and Wash Dot. The impervious surface deviation appeal came in maybe a week before the other appeal, so that's the one that we're going to have to schedule first. So we're thinking if we can get that one on May 3rd, potentially, excuse me, that might supplant the other item that we have on the agenda, since the residential development standards is also on that one. We're still kind of playing with the schedule. We need to talk with the appellant on that one and the applicant on that one to see what dates, that date may not work for either of them. This is something we just talked about this afternoon, so just to let you know that some of this might be a little fluid. We also had the Planning Commission scheduled for an extra meeting on May 31st, which is a Wednesday, a 5th Wednesday. And that was when we were thinking maybe of doing the other appeal, but again, we haven't drilled down on that yet. But these also do need to get scheduled.
I think the takeaway here is that the Planning Commission is a hard-working group at this point.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Big issues.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, Scott, anything else?
No, that was it. Just wanted to...
One more slide.
Oh, oh, you added something. There you go.
Sorry, council, just wanted to mention, we are recommending we cancel July 3rd, because it's the Monday before 4th of July, and then instead have a meeting, it would have to be a special meeting, but the following week on the 10th. So unless there are any objections, we'll just plan on that.
Objections? Are you okay with that?
You're going to then do another meeting on the 17th.
That's right.
So again, just reiterating, I will be gone the 10th and the 17th.
And just a tiny technical point. I know there was some emails flying around about this. Is it possible to put the, all the council activities, because there is a lot on, in Outlook? Is that an issue? And I know...
Can you elaborate on what you mean?
Yes. So, so there are, or Office 365, right? So we all use the same email system, which has the capability of calendaring. And so if we can load all of the events that different council members are supposed to be at, or we can schedule them ourselves as well, within the Office 365 calendar, that would be super helpful.
So let's compromise.
Okay.
I'm...
I'm all about compromise.
Yes.
That's why I'm up here.
I'm going to let you do your own calendaring for regular meetings, but when there's a special meeting, I will send a notice out to you.
Okay.
The problem is, otherwise I get all the notifications and things get moved and changed. So if you guys, if you guys can commit to putting regular meetings on your calendar, I will commit to doing special meetings on your calendars. Does that sound okay?
So I'm not sure we're talking about the same thing. I just, and partly it's just that I may be clueless, but you're talking about the stuff on the calendar, I think.
I'm just talking about...
You're talking about getting the meeting announced, that meeting email that you get that says, do you want this thing on your calendar?
No, that's not, he's actually talking about me using the calendar tool.
Right now, I can do it for you guys, and I would, on July 10th, have a special council meeting in locations, council chambers, and I would invite all of you, plus whoever else needs to be here. And that would show up on everyone's calendar. For you, Mr. Google, you could download it to your...
I forward them and they...
Yeah, it would forward them.
So what I can do, I can actually do this for you. The problem is, is every single one of our regular meetings starts at a different time, whether we have an executive session, or a study session, or none.
But that's, that's kind of the point of it, is every, every week, we sort of look and go, okay, okay, it's a study session. Today it starts at 5:00. Next week it starts at 6:00.
Right. And that isn't decided until the Thursday beforehand.
Okay.
So I can put it on your calendar, but if I have, I have to draw a limit at managing all of your calendars with trying to get the packet out. And so I can do one of two things. I could put all of the meetings on there and start them all at 5:00, and leave it up to you to look at what time the meeting actually starts, or let you do it on your own. I can't, I'm not sure if I can actually manage all of your calendars every Thursday when I put the packet out to let you know when it starts.
Okay, I'll do it myself. It's, maybe we're talking about something different. We can go talk about it offline, too.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to suggest five-minute break and then back into executive session to complete our executive session. I'm going to suggest we set 30 minutes for it, and if we're done early, we can quit early. If I'm, you don't have any concerns about that? Carrie hasn't, but if I call it 30 minutes and we're done in 15, we can quit. If I'm...
If that's been your practice before?
That has been practiced. Yeah, we rarely quit early. But I'm going to call it, so 9:30 to 10 would be the time that I'm calling for. Ally, you got a question? Or it's going to be...
I just wanted to hear what you said.
That's, no, we can do that tonight, because there is no more, there's nothing else on the agenda.
We are done with the agenda. I did say we were going to do this after we came out of the executive session. We remember we were suspended.
Yeah, no, no, I know. I'm just saying, if you say 30 minutes and you come back in 15, it's okay tonight, because it's the last item on the agenda.
Okay.
Otherwise, we would need to not do anything else for another 15 minutes.
Because we would throw somebody off who's waiting for the next item after that.
Yeah.
Good point. Okay. So we are done with everything else. Yeah?